Okay, it is 6:01 PM. I am going to call this meeting to order. As we normally do, we start off with the Pledge of Allegiance as a reminder, please turn off your video if you would like and definitely mute your microphone. So that we are free to say the pledge along with me, I should mute it myself. So I'm going to stand now and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Quick reminders on online meeting. I will do the roll call first, please, Marie.
Okay, roll call, Mayor Allen.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Alter.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Barbie.
Here.
O'Malley.
And Trustee Pine.
Here.
Attorney Gilchrist.
And Attorney Engel. He will not be with us tonight.
Tonight, okay. And I believe this treasurer and deputy clerk Judy Aaron.
Excellent. Thank you. Just a quick review for online etiquette, which we're, I'm sure we're all used to after the past year. When not speaking, please mute your audio. You're encouraged to use headphones, ideally headphones with a microphone. So there's no feedback loop created. And if two or more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, please make sure to have only one person's audio on. We're going to start this evening. I'm looking for a motion to open a public hearing on local law number one, a local law establishing rules and regulations for the keeping of chickens in the village of Huesick Falls.
I'll move.
Thank you, Deb. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Just as a reminder, in the local law review and adoption process, we introduced the second version of our chicken law after we did some edits from the 2020 version, which ended up being tabled and not being passed. After we put it up, introduced it last meeting, we set a public hearing. This public hearing is now, we will hear from anyone at this point in just a moment. And after we leave it open for a while, we have the option to close it and we could move on it as soon as tonight if we wanted to, or we could wait or table it or obliterate it. Those are sort of all of our options as we move forward here. At this point, if anyone would like to speak and share their opinion on this local law number one, and I'm going to share in a moment, the actual local law, which is present on our website. You can certainly just introduce yourself, say your name and your address, and then give us your thoughts. So at this point, if you want to share something, please unmute your video and microphone and give us your thoughts. See, this is what happens when a local congressman has a town hall, everyone goes there. Not bitter, not bitter. No, all good. Okay. So this is the local law. I'll just scroll through this briefly. I'm not hearing anyone with comments. Trustees, have you heard from any constituents with their thoughts on this?
Justin Do it already. Everybody's like ready for chickens.
Who's going to be doing the inspections?
The inspections will be done by Mark. And I'm trying to find that location where it lays out the requirements. I think that's in the next section.
You know, it's funny, I just read it. I missed it.
I know Mark is responsible for reviewing the chicken coops.
I'm going to be the chicken cop. That's a new position, comes with substantial pay raises. And a new badge that's got a chicken, that's got a chicken on it.
Well, we're getting you a new badge. Absolutely.
Put a rooster on it, Mark. You're going to put a rooster on it.
A rooster with a big no sign because we don't allow roosters. All right. Any other trustees heard anything about the chickens, chicken law?
I've heard nothing.
I hear people on it, usually the same people talk to me about it, but they're ready.
Honestly, honestly, most people think it's already passed.
I have actually heard of two additional cases where, oh, by the way, there's actually chickens being kept in my neighbor's place, but I don't want to tell you who they are to get them in trouble. But I have had, I either had one or two conversations where they liked the law and they were hoping that it would pass. Probably in part because, oh, I remember, oh, and I can't remember who it was, but I had one neighbor stop by and talk about it. And the thing they said was since their neighbor already had it, they basically, it's never a hindrance. It's, it's never a thing they noticed. It's never a thing that as a neighbor, they've had frustration over. It's just been there. It's been quiet. It's been its own thing and it's been fine. And I can't remember who it was who said that. Think it was actually someone at school I was chatting with about it. So trustees, any, anyone else have anything they want to share from anyone or anyone out in the public? Well, hearing none. I think Andy, if it's all right with you, we just continue on with our meeting and we'll leave the public hearing open.
That'd be fine. Your general practice has been to leave it open and for half an hour anyway and move on with your meeting. So that's appropriate.
All right. And I will say that just because of the fact that Congressman Delgado has his town hall at the same time, I did have a section near the end before, in the new business, before we would possibly consider adopting it. Where I just threw in another people to be heard in case anybody comes late and wants to share. And I just in regards to that, Congressman Delgado's office reached out to me very late last week, asking about the Tuesday night. I did. Right off the bat, tell them that we have our regular meeting as well. We couldn't move it, but they didn't have any other times to get up here in the near future. So they decided to go ahead with our blessing. We originally offered them the park, but with the weather, they decided to move to the Armory. So. All right, we're going to continue on with our meeting. We'll keep this open for now and we are blessed to have Judge Harold McClellan here and he is going to speak to the board. About Rensselaer County's desire to set up a civil court location and services in Huesick Falls. Harold, how are you?
Really good. Thank you, Mayor.
Very glad to have you here. Why don't you take it away to explain to the trustees what's going on?
Thank you. I got a call from County Court Judge Chris Meyer. Couple of weeks ago about the feasibility of providing a civil court location to hear civil cases in this part of the county. He asked for my input about a location and I told him that probably the best location would be in our village courtroom. It would entail using that courtroom one or two days a week. It would be done virtually, but the Office of Court Administration, Third District feels that it would be a tremendous advantage for people in this part of the county. Saving them from have to go, having to go to court in Troy for county court. So I guess what I'm asking is, and, and this is still in the beginning stages of whether or not this is going to happen. Can tell you not to disparage the Office of Court Administration, but they don't move very fast. So this may take a while. This is strictly the beginning stages. To find out the feasibility. So I guess what I'm asking is if the board and residents feel that the village courtroom would be a viable location for that. Thank you.
Harold, you said it would be virtual. So are you, are you thinking like the, the judges would stay down there, but we would have virtual communication back and forth?
I believe that's what it would be.
So attorneys and, and you know, various witnesses or whatever would just simply meet here and the judges would be there.
Correct.
Okay. I like the idea a lot. Trustees, thoughts generally speaking?
I support the idea. I mean, it's no, no harm to the village by any means. It's, it's almost like a service to, to help people who, is, is the purpose Harold? So they don't have to go down to court or is?
Yes, Bob.
So it makes sense to me, certainly.
Yep.
Harold, who would run things on this end? Would there have to be a facilitator?
Yes, there would have to be a facilitator, you know, to set up. We already have, you know, all the computer. Things in place there in the courtroom to just go ahead with it. There, I can tell you that they were also looking at the Armory. I expressed my concern to Judge Meyer about the fact that there are many things going on over at the Armory. Right now that I believe there's pickleball now, five or six days a week. And, you know, being able to set something up there, I think it would be a little bit more advantageous to do it in the village courtroom rather than at the Armory. Just my personal opinion.
So any cost involved would be borne by the court system?
Correct.
Great.
And I know the court already has their own dedicated internet setup in the courtroom.
Yes.
Would they want like a large screen TV for the judge or do they already have that here?
I don't see any reason why they would need that. I've been doing arraignments virtually for a year now, right out of my home office here. So, and when that happens, the village police department brings the principal or defendant into the courtroom. And, you know, we do the arraignment just as if it, just as if it were a live arraignment, a live arraignment, provide counsel through the public defender's office virtually as well. And if the district attorney's office desires to be in on the arraignment, they also can get in virtually. So I don't see any reason for any change in the equipment. I think everything there would work really well.
Trustees, any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Andy, I know we don't, it doesn't sound like we need any official thing right now, but if we officially wanted to move forward with this, would it be just through motion, through general support from us?
I think right now it's simply general support and Judge McClellan can report back that there was no objection from the Board of Trustees and that the matter can be pursued at some point when there's a more formal. A proposal and the board should act on that either through motion or resolution, but at this point, I think it's adequate. Judge McClellan, just to report back that there's no objection from the, the Board of Trustees.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you, Andy. And remember Harold, we charge a thousand dollars per case or just throwing it out there.
That's nothing compared to my fees.
There we go. All right. Trustees, anything else for Harold? Harold, anything else for us?
No.
All right. Great. Harold, thank you.
Thanks, Harold.
Thank you.
All right, loads of announcements. Starting with hydrant flushing, we actually are in the process of finishing, finishing this. I think, I think actually we got it done today. I will say, and this is something where I realized that we, we communicated this a fair amount, but not everyone got the message. So I'm looking into other ways where we can get word out like this. As an example, the school has an all call system and I've reached out to Superintendent Pat Daly to find out more information about that. But if we had a situation. Or if we had an all call system, we could have just put out a call saying heads up, this is where we're doing this. This is what it is. And if you find that you have some, you know, cloudy or murky water, just it's okay, run water for a minute and you're all set. And I think that would have alleviated a lot of frustration. So my apology on not getting more information out on that. I'm looking to see if we can do a better job of that.
Rob, where did we, where did we, I know we talked about it at one board meeting. Did, where else was, where are the announcements made?
Would have been, was it the last board meeting? Would have showed up on, in the East of Press.
In one of those tiny little ads in the back?
Probably.
You know, nobody reads those, right?
Yeah. And even if we put it on Facebook, well, not no one, but I know that most people just kind of skip over that. The people who know what they are will look through those, but otherwise.
But.
Yeah, yeah. But, um, no, I, and even, even throwing it up on Facebook is not going to get everybody. So I'm thinking of ways that we can do a better job of communicating that.
If we know far enough in advance, we could do it. Could you put it in with a notice in with the water bill?
That's something that I thought about. I know this one actually originally was set for, I think, June 1, June, May 31st and June 1 or something like that. And it got switched, but I think ideally in the future, that would be a good way to do it. Some simple inclusion in the water bill because everybody receives that.
Yep. The other thing is, oh, if you did have the all call system, then we could also like send out calls if, say, for example, the trash guys, the way county waste management. Was going to be off by a day or if they were coming and that might ease some of that.
Yeah. And.
Unhappiness.
Yeah. And it would be neat if we, if there was a way to segregate groups based on addresses or wards, which would be another advantage to having the alcohol system. But I'm starting to look into that. It's kind of sort of a summer goal to look into and see how much that would cost and if it would be worth it.
Okay. I think our communications definitely have to be better.
Yep. Next thing, the prep, the municipal water supply decision, the comments were originally due June 4th. There is a group that requested an extension and D E C granted them a three week extension, 21 days, not what they had originally requested, but it was 21 days they granted. So now comments are due on the 25th. And just a reminder to everybody, I want to make sure everyone knows the village office has resumed normal operations, meaning that the doors are unlocked and calling ahead and scheduling is no longer necessary. We mentioned this last meeting. I just want to make sure it gets out there.
Did you? Sorry.
No, go.
Did, did you change the message on the voicemail on the, on the phone?
No, I will do.
Because that's exactly, it says, it still says it's closed.
Marie, can you make note of that? I'll do that tonight or tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. And we do ask that you continue to follow all CDC and New York State recommendations on social distancing and mask wearing indoors, even if it feels like you need a college degree to keep up on all the changes.
Hopefully this will be our last Zoom meeting.
That is, that is actually what I've put in something later. This is, that is my intention as well. I want us to be back in person in July, even if we can't do the live stream in the highway garage. So that's the plan. All right. Couple of, I have a lot of updates, but I thought they were important to put out and talk about and feel free to interrupt with any questions, trustees. Because it's really pointing us in the direction of where we're going over the next season and the next year. We went for a C D B G grant for the 2020 round, which was delayed due to COVID to get money to replace Rogers Avenue tank. We teamed up with Robert Flores and Delaware Engineering. Robert Flores is the design, was the engineer who designed our current wastewater treatment plant, among other things. We did not get the award in speaking with Delaware. They had several clients who were going for it and, you know, several got it and a lot did not get it. However, because COVID delayed everything, there is the next round for 2021 right around the corner. The timeline for that is applications will be due July 30th and the awards would be announced in early fall, likely September or October. I do want to go forward with this again. We are trying to schedule a meeting as they said we could. To talk about our application and things we could improve on for a better luck for round two. And I think that with a lot of people getting the round one awards, that will make rounds to a little bit less competitive, which will be nice.
Any costs to doing it a second time?
I think we're just talking a few hours of engineering costs to just modify, modify the, to, to make the simple edits that would need to be done, the application. That's really it. We're just talking a few engineering hours. So. I don't know, maybe a thousand or 1500 for whatever hours that would go into it.
They give any reason for who got, got the grants and who didn't? Or is it like an AP exam where you get one, two, three and four and nothing else?
No, they didn't give specifics. And that's why we wanted to, they did, you know, say, hey, if you want to have a meeting with us to find out some more information, you can request that. And we've already requested that. I've actually requested and Delaware has followed up to try to get that situated. But no, we, and we, you know, these are hit and miss. We've gotten a couple and missed a couple in the past. It's a bummer because it's a pretty strong need and, and we have, we have some pretty strong needs and we, we're not exactly at rolling in the dough. So it would be nice to get this again. If we don't get it in the fall, then we're looking at probably needing to take out another. Ban or go into more debt because it just is going to need to be replaced. I think we've been pretty lucky that the county has been. As forgiving as they have and with, you know, the fact that we have a leak there and we know it, but it's a pretty big expense.
So is, I know he didn't say it the last time, but if, is there any chance of putting a new liner inside that tank rather than go to the whole expense of this, you don't get the grant this time?
Um, I don't think anyone here, and maybe Neil can speak up on this. I don't think we want to because that's what we did the last time and it only lasted a few years and began to leak. So I think that was the first thing that we had tried and I don't know who was on the board. I wasn't on the board back then.
Actually, I think they just put some kind of epoxy or something on the cracks itself, not line the whole thing. I could be wrong, but I think it's just something to look at it. We're putting a lot of money in bonding lately and.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a tax increase, but it goes on the bonds and the taxpayers are paying for it.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to get this current money, but you're absolutely right, Kevin. So if we move forward with this, we'll need a resolution tonight and I have that set later in the meeting. And again, feel free to interrupt with questions if you have it. Um. Fireworks. This is a serious topic, both related to the fact that we have had increased complaints in the village. And also that there was a recent accident that nearly took a life. It was a really serious medical emergency. So. I asked Andy if he could give us a brief overview of what is and isn't illegal. And I want people to know, and it's confusing because, you know, you drive 15 miles to the east and everything changes. You drive another hour and a half east there, you can probably get different stuff than you could get in Vermont or New York. So it's confusing. I want to make sure people have all the information and I want to make sure that people know that we are taking this very seriously. If you call a complaint, we're going to investigate it. Andy, can you share some, some, some? What you've been able to research and find?
I can, and this is going to be general in nature because it, it, quite frankly, it sometimes can get a little detailed about what constitutes a firework or not, but in general. Okay, general rules are fireworks remain prohibited, illegal in the state of New York. That includes consumer fireworks that are used residential, used by consumers. It includes skyrockets, bottle rockets, any kind of missile type of rocket, any aerial spinner, Roman candles. All these firecrackers are included in that. All those remain illegal in New York and are subject to criminal charges can constitute a class B misdemeanor. What New York did several years ago though, was create an exception for what are termed to be sparkling devices. And you'll see this, and I'll go through this in a moment, but you see almost this time of year, it's toward the end of June through July 5th or 6th. And it's also allowable, or you see it much less at the end of the year in late December through January 2nd. And you see these things springing up in parking lots like at, at Walmart or other large parking lot areas, the tents will go off with, you know, it'll say fireworks that, that are for sale. Technically they're not fireworks in New York. They are sparkling devices and they are allowed under state law. The law did require each county to opt into allowing sparkling devices. Rensselaer County did so. And what these sparkling devices are much less intense. They are cylinders or cone fountains. They're, they're limited to handheld or ground devices. And all they do are either make some kind of noise, a whistling or screeching noise or some kind of visual effect like. A shower of colored sparkles or smoke or something like that. What remains illegal, even for these sparkling devices is anything shooting into the air. That is still deemed a firework. That's still illegal in New York. But in that small window, right around July 4th and right around New Year's Day, in New York, you can purchase legally and use legally sparkling devices, but they are very limited in nature. Anything that shoots into the air, anything that, if you will, explodes like a firecracker, those remain illegal. Those are still deemed to be fireworks. And as I said, remain illegal in New York and subject to criminal penalty. So it does become a, a police enforcement issue for sure, because there's criminal aspects to this. It, listen, this also applies to any kind of proposed display at a private party, obviously displays by professional companies at your standard 4th of July. Kind of social, public gathering by professionals. There is state requirements for that. There's licensing requirements. There are fees associated with that. It's very detailed. That's not what we're talking about at your average yard party. Okay. That remains legal in New York. So just be aware, you're going to see these things springing up. You can buy them at Walmart for God's sake. They're, they're on the shelves during this time of year, the technically called sparkling devices. Purely legal, but limited in nature. Other than that, what you would traditionally think of as fireworks, things shooting into the air or firecrackers, Roman candles, all remain illegal. And subject to criminal prosecution.
And that of course is unless you have the permit to, you know, set off the, the big ones.
Well, yes, if you set off the big ones, by and large, that's your profession. And as I said, there are state requirements associated with that. There's bonds, significant bonding requirements, licensing fees. That's different than, than what may go on had they a personal gathering. Okay. There is some opinions out there with a change in state law that even some of these small social personal gatherings could be deemed to be one of these public displays. But they would still need to meet all of the requirements, including the state licensing, the bonding, the payment of significant fees, highly unlikely in a private gathering scenario. But technically maybe, no, the large gatherings are for the professional firms that, that put on those presentations.
Andy, is there anything, is there anything in the law that says that these professional fireworks displays have to notify the municipality that these things are happening?
Yeah, that's a fair question, Kevin. Let, let me take. Look at that. That's, as I said, highly regulated. There is, I don't believe there's a local permit or licensing requirement, but I can check for you as to whether there's a notification requirement in connection.
I know, I know the last time they had them at the Huesick Falls Country Club, notified that there was courtesy. And a lot of people, a lot of people have pets these days. Almost seems like everybody has one. He's a dog and dogs go crazy when they hear fireworks and a lot of times, a lot of animals were sensitive to the noise. I just was curious about that.
That's a lot of veterans too.
You also got a permit for that too.
Yes. But Mark, that's not mandatory?
It is mandatory.
A fireworks display?
Yeah, you have to have a permit.
Okay, that's, that's good to know.
Mark, is that a local permit?
Uh, no, that's required by the state code.
That's correct. It's a state requirement. There may be some kind of local, Mark, do you have in the village here, any kind of mass gathering permit, temporary gathering permit?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Some municipalities have that where you have a certain number of people gathering for a specific event. But absent that, there is a permit requirement, but it's at the state level, Kevin.
I know this, this latest case, the Huesick Falls Police responded and I read the press for the East, but it didn't say anything about any kind of a fine or any charges brought. Is, is that the case?
And you're talking about the most recent one?
Correct.
I, and I spoke to chief about this and chief is, will hopefully be in later. He's, he's kind of working the Delgado scene this evening. But, um, basically that is under investigation and charges could come from that investigation.
Just curious. Just curious, I know that there wasn't anything in the press release.
Yep, no, uh but chief did say that there is being investigations and charges could come out of it.
Right, and Kevin, just so you're aware, this is under the penal law. It is a class B misdemeanor to possess, use, explode, or cause to explode any fireworks. Um, so get as defined, and that's fireworks as defined, so. It can be subject to to criminal prosecution as a class B misdemeanor.
I know most people enjoy fireworks, or a lot of people do, but uh I know last year it was unbearable. It seemed like every night people were shooting off fireworks, so hopefully we can get a better handle on it this year than we did last year.
Kevin, it's been my experience that. When the state passed the state legislation allowing the sparkling devices and people see them spring up in parking lots, they're on sale at Walmart. That that you started seeing a lot of additional what are. Fireworks being used as well, not simply limited to sparkling devices and. That it's been my experience anyway that there's a lot more of those going on recently since that's the legislation was passed.
Yeah, we'd agree with that.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, thank you, Andy. Uh, appreciate that. All right, uh. Woods Brook buyout program, pretty big update. Um, first off, we received an extension. Uh, the program was originally supposed to end, I think, right around now. Or at the end of the month, I think, but we uh went for and requested the an extension. They gave it to us, so the program continues through the end of twenty twenty one, which should be enough time. Um, also of uh massive importance, we are having some really good work with the counties. To get two of the properties uh that ended up in the county hands through the foreclosure process. Um, and we're in the process of working with the county to get the title to those properties. They are one fifteen Main Street. Which is the one with the sinkhole in front of it and all the tape boarding up around it, uh as well as. One fourteen Church Street, which is the three floor building at the corner of Hall and uh Church Street. Uh, which is boarded up and has been closed. Um, that's really, really good news. Um, we do.
If we do, yeah, Kevin, if we do get titled to uh. One fourteen Main Street, I was wondering if we could look at that.
Wait, one fifteen Maine or one fourteen Church?
One fourteen Church. What if we take a look at that before we decide to tear that down to see if there's any. Historical significance or have the the or our engineer take a look at it, see whether that building's worth saving. It is a. A more prominent building than a lot of the other ones we're tearing down. Rather than just tear it down without any thought, I think we should look into that before we we do so.
Well, I'll speak to that um specific to the grant program that we have with the state. Uh, Shippo would have to do a review of that site, but if we get it with the purpose of taking it down. Um, and that would be financed by the um uh by the grant. If we got it from the county and didn't take it down, it would no longer be viable to be used um in the program. And the funds that we have set aside for the shipper review and the demo would not be accessible, and then we'd have the liability. Uh, of of that property, so I understand what you're saying.
Well, can it before we do that, then can we have some people look at it first before we decide to do that, rather than. Take a building down that maybe there's people buying buildings around from New York City. And if there's a possibility that that could be rehabbed and made brought back to its former glory. I think I'd rather see that happen than have another building teared down and taken off the tax rolls.
I agree.
If we leave that building, if we did leave that building, would it deter our plans for the Woods Brook uh renovations?
It would limit uh a little bit of what we can do. That property contains the back concrete wall of the Woods Brook, which is. Uh, cracked and starting to cave in towards the Woodbrook. Um, it's it's right after the it passes underneath Hall Street. Um, that's um.
Right, and.
Yeah, and um. It it would, it would have um a small effect, not not a, not a huge effect, um but it would definitely um. It would definitely impact the possibilities of what we could have, especially on that end of the uh. Um, that Woods Brook area before it heads under the Dodge Building.
I would just like to see the building get a chance before it's too late. I mean, we saw the Elks building come down and. Left an awful hole downtown and I think you see another historic, I think that building must date back to the. Late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, and then not give it a second look.
Uh, Rob, if I if I could add.
Yeah, sure.
That is uh the intent of the board, that investigation should be done now. Before any further process with the county because Rob is correct, under the program. Uh, there are limitations to what title can be taken for. Uh, it is exclusively for flood control purposes. There are deed restrictions in the deed taking title, limiting the use. For uh flood control and and flood maintenance purposes. So that would be a little complicated if the village were to take title to one fourteen church, but keep the building. Because the deed would be restricted for flood control purposes and that would certainly limit the use of the building, so. And and that's part of the the grant program, the. Uh, purchase and sale contract as well as the proposed deed restrictions were reviewed. Uh, required and reviewed and authorized by the state under the grant program. So if this is a property that the board is not intent on seeing the building demolished and the parcel used for flood control purposes. That should be investigated now because that that that's going to cause some complications if the village does take title. And with the intent that maybe the building can be saved because that would not be allowed under the grant program.
Yeah, and I I understand, Kevin, what you're saying. Um, we do have a lot of of beauty in some of the historical buildings we have here. Um, I have, I did not grow up here. Um, I ha- I have been a resident of the village. For like, I think thirteen years now. Uh, the majority of my time in the village that has either been. Uh, boarded up or just kind of looking to have serious needs, so. I'm coming at it from a perspective of that building has been an eyesore from my experience in Housick Falls. Obviously, it hasn't been the same for you guys who. Grew up here and saw it in its heyday. Um, but and from my perspective, from the vantage point of having more. Um, of that area to fix the Woods Brook and having um a larger area to work with and make a beautiful gem in the middle of the village. I would be very much in favor of taking the building down. And again, if that's not the popular opinion, if that's not what the board wants to do, that's fine. That's the beauty of democracy, but. My opinion right now, um and it would be pretty hard to change, is I would like to see that come down.
I agree, I I agree, unless it has, unless it's really important. Uh, history wise, it's, nobody's been in that thing forever.
Well, part of the. It's a beautiful building.
It is.
Not for the last twenty years, it hasn't been.
Well, part of the problem, part of the problem is, and county auctions just happens all the time. The last person that bought this bought it five, eight years ago, whatever it was. And it, he didn't do anything with it, so it sat there empty for all this time. And now it's coming back up again for another tax sale where this this happens over and over again throughout the county because nobody. Nobody holds them to any kind of standard about what they have to do with the building. And the same things happened over and over again on buildings on Church Street, Upper Church Street. It's happening again and uh. Yeah, I don't, I I wouldn't blame it on neglect to the person that owned it before, but. This is a a problem that the county has. A lot of other counties now are making people that they buy buildings have a plan for the building so they can. Uh, have a plan about getting it back in a shape and back open again so people can use it again.
Yeah, so I I wanna, I wanna chime in. Um, so, yeah, if those things were in place. And and there was a mechanism to make sure all those things would happen, that would be great, but that's not the world we live in today. There is no mechanism for preventing somebody from buying it and letting it sit idle again.
Well, there isn't other counties.
So, well, so, but there isn't here, and it's something we gotta act on now. So, yeah, maybe there should be, but there isn't. So to delay moving forward on the Woods Book project for this now seems kinda. You know, the horses left the barn a while ago on this project and just because it's coming up on the auction roll. You know, if somebody wanted to do something with it, they would have been looking into it before now, you know.
Well, they could, well, the problem is they couldn't do anything with it, Craig, because it's, it's been, it's been owned some by somebody and the county. Uh, has had an auction after six years of unpaid taxes. How can I be doing?
Are you, are you suggesting that the the village should take possession of it and then try to?
No, I, what I, what I'm saying is, is try to have some people look at it, see if it's worth saving. Before we take it down and hate, have us lose another historic building in the village.
But who's, who's gonna look?
Parking lot.
Who's gonna look at it and decide it's worth saving and then do it? Do you have somebody in mind? Or is it just some, is it gonna be us going and saying, oh, we should save that, but yet nobody's got any money or or desire to save it?
No, I do have some people, people that are construction that have been involved in some of the other uh happenings in downtown that are, have invested money. And I think it's worth another look before we even move forward.
They should, they should be looking, but I mean.
Well, maybe they could bid on it. If it, if we take it off the tax rolls for the auction, how they gonna bid on it?
Well, uh, it was my impression that they hadn't received any bids on it. I don't know if you can bid ahead of time, but I know the county had mentioned that there were no bids on it. When they took it off the 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 roll.
I I think without, without those mechanisms in place to prevent it from just becoming another dead property, just like it is today. I don't see why we would take that risk. Because there's nothing to guarantee that that's not exactly what we have a year from now, and we're stuck staring at the same old building with no funds to take it down. But, you know, I I just.
I know.
And Emily has raised her hand, so I'm gonna be quiet and let Emily, if she wants to speak up.
Hi, the only thing I wanted to point out is that we've been working on this for years, years. We're finally getting to a place where we could purchase it, do what we need to do to get. Um, I don't, I can't, I'm lost for words right now, but some, some kind of normalcy for the people that actually live there. And, you know, this project needs to move forward. What's the timeframe? Who's gonna come look at it? Exactly, I'm gonna repeat what Craig just said. What do you have in mind to to get the ball rolling? Because we shouldn't hold up this project any longer. A lot of people, I mean, I have a godmother who can't even use her garage to park her car. And she's in her eighties. Um, so, yeah, I have a little personal stake in this a little bit. Cause I have to listen to her, but I love her to death and I want, you know, she is pushing eighty. And, you know, she has to shovel off her car. She has to shovel around her car when she has a perfectly good garage to park it. So. You've had, what, the flood was in two thousand seventeen, we're in two thousand and one, and it's not, or two thousand twenty one, and we're just coming to this. That we want to save it because it might be historical?
No, but uh Emily, we haven't even talked about buying this building until a couple of weeks ago.
Uh, no, this has been something that we had on the targeted buyout since the buyout program.
I know, but nobody's communicating this to the village trustees or the rest of the community.
I've always known it was part of it.
I know, you're on the village board.
I don't know, we've shared the documents, we've shared the maps, we've talked about these properties, we've listed them before, so. It's, it's not new that we're targeting it and we we talked about it in several meetings about how.
I just think it's short sighted to do this without.
My, my thing is to set a timeframe. I understand you're saying you have people that are interested. If they're interested, like, are we gonna give them a week? Are we gonna give them two weeks? Are we gonna give them a month? It, we need to have like a certain date, not this meeting go by, another meeting go by, another meeting go by. Because we're getting to like the finish line.
No, all I'm asking you is if someone qualified, go in there, look at it, see what's worth saving. If it's not, then we can move on. We can buy the building and tear it down.
Well, there's.
Who's paying for someone to come in and and determine whether it's salvageable or not?
Well, let me, let me just, let me clarify two points. Um, first off, we can still get this Woods Brook project done without the property. So I want to stress that for 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 Kevin's side of things. We have not been able to access the building because we don't own the building. I don't think we had, uh, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we had a legal right to go in there unless there was something. Uh, in the exterior or structurally that suggested we needed to have Mark go in. Andy, is that the case?
Uh, that's the case, and this was one where we did not have um an access agreement. For the village to get on the property uh during the program. And right now, it's my understanding the county has title, so there might be an opportunity for Mark to get in there now.
But we could certainly follow up with the county to see if um we can get Mark in there to take a look. I'm sure Mark's jumping up and down at the possibility, right, Mark?
Absolutely, uh, yeah, well, a couple of things. I I did receive some calls on those because that that property was listed initially on the auction. And, um, you know, but the parking is a, is an issue. Cause I'm not sure how many units ended up being in there, but I think there was at least six. Which would require, you know, um, at least nine or ten parking spaces. And the only way they can get any parking spaces is on village property if we take that adjacent property down. Uh, I'm not sure if that's an answer to anybody's question.
That's, that's not something we can do because we have acquired that property through the Woods Brook buyout. And there are limitations to what we can and can't do on that property. I don't know, Andy, if we would be able to. Say, put a parking lot there to be used for that property if it ever came back.
Um, we we could certainly look at the details. I'll give you my general reaction, which is. Uh, I do not think it would be allowable under the program to put parking. On property acquired through the program for the benefit of adjacent private owner. I, that would not be allowed.
It would probably have to be some sort of village uh lot that's first come, first served, and you know, likely.
Right, and I'm not in favor of that. I mean, we can't, you can't provide a parking lot for a resident. For a landlord, that's, we're creating a monster if we try to do something like that as well. We're setting precedent, which is a bad idea.
Get ready, because someone's gonna come to the zoning board and ask for that, but I want to say if, if, not me. Um, if. If um that building gets bought, say somebody sees it and it's worth saving, it's historic and it's really cool. Um, they may turn it into a one family or a two family. We don't know. First of all, that's one thing I want to say. Another thing I want to say is, um, is that. Um, I know, I I get Emily's frustration and all the people who live, you know, in the Woods Brook area, but. It's too often, we, and I don't mean Housick Falls, but, you know, Grand Central Station is gone. Um, that we, for the short term. Fix, we lose something that's old and valuable or that we could have gone at it another way. Um, so, I mean, when I think about, you know, the fact that. Woods, you know, if Woods Mansion was still there, boy, we would have an amazing museum in this town and it would be a huge draw, but we don't.
That's not, that's not a historical building.
Um, and my other, my, my other point is, is that's a, that's a purely commercial district, right?
That is the downtown commercial district.
Then it doesn't, we can't, I mean, we can think about it as as board members, but I know. Other apartments that have gone in in commercial districts and when I was on the planning board and I was not allowed to question. Parking because it's commercial district, so this would be the same situation.
Someone want to interject something?
It's Denise.
Hi Denise.
Hi, I just want to say that this is not the first time this property has been up on auction. And somehow this, it seems to miraculously uh be purchased by a new LLC. Or a new company which ends up back in the same hands and nothing happens with it. It's been the scenario for the last ten to twelve years.
I think they call that money laundering.
I don't know what they call it, but the county has no way of probably determining who can bid and who can. Um, purchases properties, but nothing happens.
Yeah, and we've seen that with a lot of other of the larger properties, um, where it's been passed from friend to friends. Through LLCs, um, and nothing happens with it for years. Just as a review, this is a document that the state put together for us. I want to say it was back in like twenty eighteen, right around the time we were discussing and eventually getting the program. Um, and I've shown this a bunch of times before. This blue line is approximately the culvert. Um, the state put this together, so they got it mostly right. Um, this area is pretty close. It goes through the Hall Street area. We are talking about one fifteen Main Street, getting that from the county as well as one fourteen Church. We already have three, five, and seven Hall Street, which gives us this area here, which is important. We're discussing with four Hall Street to get this small piece of land right here. And we have one hundred to one hundred eight Church Street right here as well. Uh, then it disappears under the Dodge Building and this, uh, runs through the culvert. The culvert is not accurately depicted here because we know the culvert goes in this way, hooks this direction, someone's got some extra noise on the background, if you can mute your, uh, microphone there, I'm not sure who that is. Um, it goes under the Dodge Building, turns, goes across and behind Elm Street this way, and then comes out here underneath twenty-seven Elm Street, which is the other property that we've purchased. So we have acquired this property, we've acquired one hundred to one oh eight, we've acquired three, five, seven. We're looking to get this property here, plus one fifteen from the county, get a small piece of land here and that would, uh, finish everything off. Chief, any chance you're on right now? All right.
Yeah, I'm on, but I'm, I'm muted, so I'm listening to it.
All right, sorry, chief, thanks, and hi. So that was just a quick review, um, I knew that we were talking about this, I wanna bring that up. Um, and you know, and there's a lot of good points, I would love to see old buildings make it, but I know that my experience, uh, for about a decade and a half here has been that that building has been in shambles and I've seen a lot of other really nice buildings just continue to slowly deteriorate over time. Um, and right now, we have the opportunity and the funding to take it down, which is not something that we're gonna have forever.
So we have the funding to take the building down, how much longer will it be before these properties are developed in some kind of park or some kind of a, a grass or green space comes up?
Uh, that's a good question. The grant program closes the end of this calendar year, so by the end of this calendar year, we have to have the demo done, the property, uh, the property is flattened out. And then we have additional grant money from the state to do an engineering planning grant, which is a smaller grant that would look at what's been done on the upper level with the Woodsbrook, with the grant with the town and sort of come up with a plan. And then that plan, we would either make it happen ourselves or go for another grant to make a gloriously wonderful thing happen in that spot.
So even if we took it down, it could be years before we actually see something happen.
Uh, it, yes, it, it will be a while before something happens, it will probably be a couple of years still. We have to put a plan together as to what we wanna see happen, um, which will take, um, I don't know, six to nine months, uh, to go through that process. Uh, and then that will be likely right in time to go for some grants or do, see what we are able to do ourselves on our own.
I just think the building should get one look, that's all I'm asking for.
I, I, me too.
All right, we'll reach out to the county and see if we can get Mark in there now that the county has title.
How long before the county turns the title over to the village, if they are going to?
Well, I was actually speaking with, uh, Rich Christ, uh, today, who's been super helpful with this. Their regular meeting is the same time we have our regular meeting, it's the second Tuesday. So they are gonna be in the process of getting all of the things ready to pass over to the village. It will be something that they would likely make official at the July meeting. And Andy and I were actually talking about not moving on the resolution tonight so that each of us could do it at the same time in the July meeting. So it kind of in a sense is something that we would like to, uh, move on in, in the July meeting and that gives us time to have Mark get in there and take a look at things and report back to us.
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at, okay, perfect, okay.
No offense, but is, is it possible to bring in somebody from the construction trades that maybe has a little more background in saving buildings?
Andy, would it, would it be?
If I can jump in, that's really gonna be a county issue, okay? That's, the county is entitled to the parcel now. That, in my mind, raises some, some issues about insurance liability. I think the county would be comfortable having the village's building department go in and look at the property just for structural and code compliance issues. But that, that would be up to the county, that's not a village determination.
All right, I'll talk to somebody down there tomorrow.
Would we have the opportunity to acquire this property in the future if we don't move on it now?
If it went to auction and someone purchased it, uh, obviously no, unless it went through them with a private sale. Um, the way that the past owner or a couple owners have been on this one is it was purchased, uh, nothing happened, backed, uh, taxes were not paid for many years. And about, I think Denise, what is it, about three to five years before it ends up back at auction foreclosure?
It all depends on when they have enough properties to come out for an auction, I believe.
Okay.
But it's quite a while.
Yep.
Uh, the law is three years, uh, most of them have been five years recently. At least five years.
And at that point, it's, it's a lot, it's a high number.
Actually, I've, if, if the time is up, like it is now on this one, and they take it off, it would be brought up to the next auction, which would could be six months to a year.
Oh, for the next auction, like if we had the county take it off the auction and decided not to get it from the county? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
The problem with, you know, not purchasing it now is because we have the deadline for the grant. In order to get the whole process in motion, I believe, for the, you know, the asbestos abatement, we need to know what properties we have in hand, is that correct?
Yeah, which is why, like, we, we still have to wait for the July meeting anyway because that's when it sounds like the county would be able to, uh, i- it's a legislative decision, so that the county legislature has to, um, vote on it and approve that. But once it is, then the, assuming they would approve it, the title would come over to us probably in the next, I don't know, week or two. Um, and that would give us time, once we had title, to start putting out for bid, um, the various abatement things and demo. Um, and, and just to dovetail off of that, and I spoke with Neil and Andy and we're gonna discuss this again in about a week or two. We're starting to talk about, uh, the order of what has to happen for this whole project because this summer and this fall is, is kind of our, our, our last good season for this. Um, and we, we all sort of tentatively agree that twenty-seven Elm Street needs to be the first priority. Um, I think we may even ask, and I can't remember Neil or Andy, uh, we may ask for permission to put this out for bid, um, to do, uh, the, um, asbestos abatement and demolition first. Neil said that I think, uh, it would make more sense to have a, a private company come in and take it down to the foundation than we could, uh, the village could finish off the rest. That's the first priority because it addresses the bottleneck at the end of the Woodsbrook. And then once that's done and, you know, as, over the next month, we're figuring all this stuff out, then we'll be able to do, you know, either four properties, the four we have now, three, five, seven Hall Street and one hundred and one oh eight together, or we can add the fifth, or we can add the sixth, or possibly the seventh, because we are working, um, uh, to get one oh seven Main Street as well. And that would be something that we would, you know, we're still working on the finer details of what we can do versus what we have to put out, uh, for bid. But we do have a hefty chunk of that one million dollar, um, grant set aside for a, all of this work, um, asbestos abatement, uh, and demo, and in particular, I wanna say. And do you remember if we had like a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand set aside just for the demo of that one building, one fourteen Church Street?
Uh, my recollection, Rob, is that one of the properties, and I, I can't recall which specific one, but one of the properties was budgeted at a fairly high demo cost.
And it was just because the, the size of the, of, of, of the property, but also with this one, it's, you know, right up against Route twenty-two, so that's another expense of redirecting traffic as that's going on.
Correct.
So I hope that answers all the questions on the Woodsbrook. Um, I know this has been like sort of a slow burn and we're finally at the season now where we're gonna be moving on this. I think this has been really good discussion, um, despite the fact that we don't all agree on it, but we're definitely gonna, um, look, get Mark in there to look at it and report back to the trustees. Any more questions on this?
Yeah, I could, one thing, Rob, one thing, I could say that, uh, we need, everyone is talking about getting this flood stuff under control. We need to start this project, in my opinion, and my two cents is that building has, you know, I've lived here forever, it's always been a nice or, you know, maybe it's an owner issue, but I think we really need to get going on this, I don't, that's my two cents. And Deb, everyone else's opinion is just as important. But my two cents is, let's get moving. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, uh, all trustees, um, for all your thoughts on that. All right, let me get back to, uh, updates. Um, I addressed that, all right, solid waste recycling pickup, this has been a frustration for many for a while, uh, on all sides. Um, I wanna highlight a few key points. First off, and I know we talked about this last time, but please do not overfill garbage and recycling. Uh, this requires the garbage truck to have, to empty the vehicle earlier, which means they lose time when they have to go back and dump and make space for more. Uh, and that makes the people at the end of the Friday, uh, run, because we have a Thursday, Friday run, uh, almost always end up being Saturday morning, which they hate. And of course, County Waste isn't a big fan of it as well because it's a Saturday. Uh, additionally, uh, we have to be a lot better with what we throw out in the trash. Someone, I think it was Neil mentioned today, some of, some, some of the things he's seen people trying to put in the garbage can or in the recycling, which is just blatantly not okay. Um, but we did have an incident on Montel Street, uh, where the trash caught fire because there were things in there that shouldn't have been, and it happens. But it, you know, slowed things down, had to, uh, dump it out, take care of it, which they did, they did a great job on that, timely manner, but, uh, it does make some frustrations.
Were you home to see it?
Uh, I was not home to see it. In fact, I actually texted my wife because, uh, Kevin gave, was, was the one who gave, uh, me and Bobby a heads up really fast. Thank you, Kevin. And I was like, so, uh, any chances of fire down the street, uh, on the road? And my wife's like, I'm sorry, what? Um, but yeah, there was. Um, but I spoke with, uh, the driver, um, who does our areas, really cool guy. And then I spoke with Greg from County Waste and they have been talking about the possibility, and trustees, I want your thoughts on this, um, about adding a third day of pickup. And what they would do is instead of our Thursday, Friday run, they would do a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday run. And the way they mapped it out to me is while the Thursday pickup would pretty much be the same as it is, um, much of Friday's pickup would be moved to Wednesday and there would still be some remaining on Friday. That means that, uh, Friday would be a smaller pickup day, Wednesday would be a bigger pickup day. And if things got behind, instead of it moving into Saturday, it would just pick up extra time on Friday. So trustees, what are your thoughts? Uh, oh, and, and the other important point, uh, with, with this is that there's no additional cost to the village or village residents and there's no change in, in any contract stuff that would have to happen. So trustees, what are your thoughts on this plan?
I think if we do go to, I think if that's gonna make it easier and people know when they're coming, that's great. It's a good thing. My, given our history of communicating things, we have to be really, 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 uh, specific about who gets picked up on what day.
Yeah, that would definitely be a mailer home if, if we made a change, so everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah.
And they sent me a picture, um, as a tentative plan. It sounds like what they would do is they would leave a lot of Second Ward, which is River Street, Who's Ex Street, Center Street, Elm Street, Willow Street, that would stay Friday. But a lot of the river roads, uh, western side, uh, of the, uh, water and mechanic street would move to Wednesday pickup, along with, um, a little more in the back of this, of, uh, the McCaffrey Street area. Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, no. Um, Cary Avenue would become, uh, Wednesday and so would Rogers Avenue, on the areas up on Rogers Avenue. Griffin would still stay, stay Thursday. Most of the stuff on the east side of Main Street would stay Thursday. But that's kind of the tentative plan that they've aligned right now.
So long as people know which day they are, even if their neighbors are something different. We really have to be very clear.
Yep.
So Rob, that's just something they're talking about right now. It's not something that we are, we're, do we have to make a decision on this right now?
We don't have to make a decision, but they were wanting to hear from us what we thought about it.
I agree with Deb.
Yeah, it's a non-issue, I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I mean, garbage gets picked up.
I mean, they just, listen, they, they just came back, they, they gave us a good quote, they get, just renewed their business. We're complaining that they've got a problem and they're offering us a solution. If we don't try it, then we just gotta say, well, we're gonna suffer with poor service because we didn't try their solution, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, but the key is, and, and I know this has been echoed from multiples, it, it has to be messaged and sent out, right? So people understand unequivocally what the heck is going on.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to get it, uh, that the route narrowed down for sure, exactly where the route's gonna be and then notify everyone in those areas that they're gonna change. Do we need to notify the, the residents who, who are not affected?
I would notify everyone, I would make one letter with the color coded map. Yeah, in fact, I know you guys probably can't see this, but they gave me, oh, you definitely can't see that, that's a hot mess. They gave me a color coded map of the village and they highlighted each street and what would be picked up on what day. We would make something just like that and make it very clear about where they're gonna be.
I think to do that, I think if, if we sat down and made a, a couple of people sat down and made a plan and then we reviewed it as a board and then we could put it out there. But I think the idea itself of having Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is a good one.
Okay. All right, that's great, we're all in agreement, I'll start moving on that, thank you. Uh, final few updates.
Mark has a word to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, I don't see the hand raising, why is that?
This is a part of this, uh, communication with the garbage, uh, we, we don't have a garbage cop yet, but there's a, there's a heavy push to have one in the local office. But, uh, part of the communication with that needs to be explained, you guys touched on it a little bit, explaining what should and should not go into the garbage cans, one. But we have some people in, in and around the village who are using multiple cans, a single family house that has three or four cans. Uh, I looked at the local law, I don't really see anything that gives, uh, the code officer authorization to push and say, you know, you can't have three or four cans. So people need to know that they're going to have to pay more because I think within the contract, maybe it's, it's gotta be somewhere that says you can have one recycle can, one garbage can, and here's what goes in those cans. If you have more than that, then you have to pay more. Like for a multifamily house, I have to pay more for garbage cans, I have three units, I have to pay for three times the cost. So that needs to be part of the communication. One family houses cannot have more than one of each can.
What, what, um, where do they get the cans?
They take them from neighbors, you know, some of the houses were empty, the garbage cans are sitting there, so the neighbors take them.
Yeah, I've seen some cases where zombie properties have, their garbage cans have been taken and used next door.
Oh, okay, because I know they gave us ours when, um, we moved here, so.
Yep.
So I'm just, I'm, this is part of the overall communication that needs to be there.
Andy, I'd like to, us to look into what local laws we have in the books in terms of what code enforcement can and can't do. Um, as an example, if, you know, he's, uh, driving up one of the roads and he sees a garbage can that has something overflowing an extra two feet out of it because it's not meant to be in the garbage can or fit, it would be nice to be able to have some sort of authority to say, hey, this is, uh, this is not okay.
We can certainly add that to the list, I know we have a number of local laws that need to be addressed and reviewed, we can add that.
Mark, also isn't a law that the garbage cans are to be placed on the side or at the back of the house after they're been empty?
Actually, it goes even further than that, they're supposed to be covered.
What?
They're supposed to be fenced in and covered. You, if you look at the law, they're supposed to be pulled back off the street and put into a fenced and covered area.
That explains that three foot long fence that sticks off of my garage. I never understood why it existed there and now I understand why. Wow, that's weird. Kathy, you had a, you have a question? Yeah, the sinking one.
Hi, sorry, I was just, I'm muting, um. Hi.
Hi Kathy, please, yeah, sure.
I'm new here, I just bought the house at, uh, Sixth Saratoga Street. Um, and I, I, I know that you said, was there information on the garbage cans? And there is information stating that there's the one, um, trash can and the one recycle can on the website. I do work in, uh, front of school, so I fortunately have been, had opportunity to become a little more computer savvy with some of this stuff, but I find the website not to be very user friendly and not very updated. So I actually had to call and find out, um, when my actual trash day is because everybody was putting their trash out, um, on Wednesday, which I followed suit, but nobody brings their trash in until Friday. And it was explained to me because of the issues that you all just discussed that sometimes the delay, it, you know, has that overlap. But I did wanna say that on the website, it is, I, I found it to be pretty clear on what you can have for barrels. I was not, did not readily find that the barrels are supposed to be enclosed or covered. So that, that wasn't available. And as a new resident, I'm trying to track down all the things I need to know. And it's been tough. Mark helped me out with a couple of things. I've applied for a fence pending, you know, COVID allowing me to get supplies, but you know, trying to follow up on the trash and know what I need to know and find the things that I need to find. Trash was one of them. So I just thought I'd throw in there because I know somebody had asked, is it on the, is it available as to what barrels are available? And it is. I just wanted to throw that into you guys.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it and welcome to the community.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing. Welcome.
And I know the website is something I've been trying to get improved for like the past four years, but I'm shortly done with the school year and we'll have a lot more time for the projects. And that's one of the big ones. So thank you, Kathy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to continue through my last few updates unless anyone has any questions, feel free to interrupt. I was going to have an update on the spectrum installation down at Waterworks Road, but they don't have an update for us because it's still sitting in their construction department. So I'm just going to keep mentioning this each meeting and keep reaching out to them every couple of weeks to find out what's going on. Cause I, we really want to get the internet down there. In terms of the prep and water supply comments, the village is in the process of completing our comments on it. We should have the comments done and submitted by the end of the week. Just want to make that clear. And I'm planning next meeting to have quotes for some technology and server, I almost said sewer upgrades. We did that a couple of years ago. Server upgrades in the municipal building at the July regular meeting. So just heads up on that every time the power goes out. Our server is in rough shape for like a day and it makes the entire office hold their breath collectively for like five hours. And that's just not healthy for anyone.
Hey, Rob?
Yeah.
We have a public hearing to close and one to open.
That is where we are next. Exactly right. Am I sharing the spread? I am. Okay. I'm seeing the video. Yeah. So is there, this is our last chance for anyone to speak up on local law, number one, the local law specific to establishing rules and regulations on chickens. Anyone out there like to share any of their thoughts?
Well, share it out on this one.
All right. Well, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to close public hearing on local law number one of 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Any further discussion? On favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Okay, public hearing on local law number one is closed. Let's talk about public, getting a public hearing open on public, I'm sorry. Opening a public hearing on local law number two of 2021. This is a local law amending the village of Housick Falls zoning map. Can I have that motion?
I'll make that motion, Rob.
Thank you, Craig.
Motion. I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. And again, we've talked about this before. This is just a very small change to the village zoning in this one specific location. At this point, if you would like to ask a question or share, feel free. Kathy, I don't know if your hand is previously up or still up, but if you want to unmute yourself and ask about this, that's totally fine.
No, it's up again. I was actually signing in and joining into the meeting to find out what the, what the status was and can you have chickens, can you not, if you can, what the criteria was. And it was explained to me when I called into the town that it would be addressed at this meeting. So I don't know what the information of that is, and there's not any information that I've been able to access on the website. So.
The local law, it should be up on the village website now, but I have it on the screen here. This is the introductory law that we introduced last meeting. This is sort of round two of our attempt to do it. We had a local law on this set in, I want to say some fall or winter of 2020. And we, we heard some, some suggestions, made some changes. And this is the law as it exists that we're going to, that we could pass tonight. It seems like, like that's where we're heading. And the quick summary is you can have it in your property. You can have up to six hens, no roosters. There's some oversight by the code enforcement departments to make sure things are going okay. You can't have it in certain parts of your yard, like you can't have it in your front yard, but you could have it on your side. It has to be a certain amount of feet away from property lines. So you can't just throw it up against your neighbor's line. And there's some requirements on the size of the hoop. It can't exceed a certain square footage or can't exceed a certain heights. I think it's six feet in heights. And they must be fully enclosed. That's, that's kind of the quick version. But if you go to the village website, it should be on there. And if it wasn't there earlier, that's my bad. So I apologize for that.
That's okay. Maybe I'm just not sure on how to find it or access it.
That's all good. So ideally we, it sounds like we may pass it tonight, in which case it'll become law and we'll post it online. So everyone has it.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. And let me share up the local law number two, which we're in a public hearing for now. This is to alter the zoning map in one specific area. Andy, do you want to speak about this? I know we've spoken about it before.
Sure. This is the local law to amend the zoning map to place this particular parcel at 17 Cary Avenue. The tax map parcel ID numbers identified into the commercial zoning district. It is adjacent to an existing commercial establishment. It was brought to the attention of the village by the owner of the business and the request to place their adjacent owned parcel into the commercial zone to be used as part of their existing commercial operation. Mark, am I missing anything?
No, I don't think so, Andy. I think that's, that's pretty much it. It's, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, this is a pretty simple, straightforward, clear cut one. So at this point, if anyone wants to speak or ask questions about it, please unmute yourself and feel free.
And before that, I'll just note for the record too, that this is a zoning amendment and it is within 500 feet of a state highway. So the proposal was forwarded to the Rensselaer County Department of Economic Development and Planning. And we do have their review and recommendation completed indicating that this would not conflict with county plans and that local considerations shall prevail. So that requirement was satisfied.
Thank you, Andy. Over at the Florida, anyone who'd like to comment on this? If you'd like to speak, unmute. All right, we will leave the public hearing open for a little bit longer in case anybody joins late and has some burning desire to speak about this adjustment to the zoning map. In the meantime, we will return back to our regularly scheduled meeting and move forward. All right. So this is the people to be heard section, the normal people to be heard section. At this point, it could be about any business that you want to share about or any information. When you speak, just say your full name and street address. And just as a reminder, we record all meetings and they eventually get posted on YouTube. So would anyone like to speak? All right. Sounds like no. I will say I have a small people to be heard in case anybody joins the meeting late, wants to speak on either local laws. And that's coming later. All right, let's proceed on. Reports and minutes. Trustees, I think this is attachment number two, three, no. It's for attachment number four that I sent you in case you have the reports. Denise had to sign off. We don't have anything additional with the treasures report. I know she sent out a request on some info earlier. Anything anybody wants to add or ask about for the treasure report? Andy, if we don't have a treasure report, do we approve it or just move on?
So let me ask, is there a physical treasures report or no?
No, not this month.
Nope. We just adjourn and you'll deal with that at the next month's meeting.
All right. Please report. Chief, are you on?
I am here.
Fire away, chief.
I just came from Congressman Delgado's meeting. It's well attended over there. I don't know if it's still going to be going on, but if this meeting ends, some people may want to go over. But for our report, for, for this month, it was, we handled 181 calls. That was quite a jump from last month. Our calls for a total for the year are 664, which is pretty much on pace of what last year's was. The calls are, again, our, our biggest calls were the domestics that were up to 30 EMS calls up to 36. Arrests for the month were for assault, obstructing governmental administration, traffic harassment, drive while intoxicated, medicine, and some juvenile arrests. We, on our EMS ends, and we're going to start breaking this out a little bit more for, for the board members at any time. If you wish to review some of these calls, please just reach out to us and we can make those calls available for you if you would like to look into them a little bit deeper. Unity House had the grand opening on May 27th. It was at 11:00 AM. It was great attendance. They're very excited about being here in the village. They're going to try to start expanding some of their hours as well as expanding some of their programs they have. So I encourage everyone just to get over and visit or get the word out. So if anyone needs services, please hit there. The Memorial Day parade was a great success. Everyone seemed to have enjoyed it. The weather held out. And other than that, I'd just like to report that we did have an officer that was injured in a, in an accident. He was transported over to Albany Med. He has a broken leg and he's going to be out of service for a short time, but he's going to be okay. Short of that, with, unless anyone has any questions, that's the report.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, we were talking about fireworks earlier. And last year it seemed like an epidemic that seems like people were shooting out fireworks almost every weekend. What resource do you have available to write tickets to people using illegal fireworks?
The one that was the other night, that's a continuous investigation. There are arch charges that are going to be pending. It was the volume of fireworks that the individual had as well as the type of fireworks that they had. When you get into just bottle rockets or small firecrackers that you see sold at the, these tents, they've all been approved by the state. They are legal, but when you go up in capacity of the type of fireworks that were used, for example, last Saturday, there's whole new charges for those and sections that have to be looked at. On this particular one, I've conferred with the state police on it. The amount of fireworks that we confiscated, we're housing right now in the, we're going to have to utilize the state police bomb squad to come up to take these out of here because they, they can't be transported or just thrown in the garbage can. So it's the type and the quantity of fireworks that the individual brings.
Yeah. I was just curious because last year we had a lot of complaints from people because of their animals and they were obviously high grade fireworks that people bought in New Hampshire or wherever, Area 51 or one of those places. And they're bringing it back and it's not just on weekends. It's always seems to be weekdays as well. Once they get going, they, they roll on throughout the summer. So hopefully we can stay on top of some of these places.
I anticipate that this, this summer is going to be very, very busy. You can see with the number of calls, there was an increase from last month. Last month we had 127 calls, we're up to 181 calls. The mayor and I have spoken, I know he's going to confer with Andy over what the village can do to, to limit it, the use of the fireworks. But one of the areas that I think we can explore is if a business or a group over X amount is going to be gathered for these fireworks, that a permit should be issued. And then the village should be able to have that right to say no or yes to that.
We actually, we were talking about that earlier and Mark mentioned that a permit is required for anything like that. So we have a, and Andy reviewed for us some things. So just like you're saying now, we're full speed ahead on, on making sure if we get a report, we're investigating it and making sure people know what is going on and what's not allowed. And if we need to write tickets or further investigation, we're in.
Would Andy, would that cover the, like if, if a resident was going to have a party, a graduation party, I'll use that for example, and they were planning on having fireworks. So the number of people that would be there are well over 50 or 100. Would that possibly fall into the need for a permit?
Well, we're going to look at that because what we discussed earlier is that there are state law requirements in conjunction with licensing and, and bonding requirements and insurance requirements. But there, there isn't a local permit requirement just for the fireworks. And then my question for Mark was, is there any kind of temporary event or mass gathering permit requirement? And you could put standards on that and there's not in the village now. So this is something that we should look at to determine the best way to approach this issue in the village.
And, and maybe we should make this as a joint between the town and the village because on this particular case that we're talking about on Saturday night, that was right on the town line. Some of those fireworks were blown off outside the village, which puts it out of per se our jurisdiction. But it might be, we might want to look at that for the town and the, and the village to look together as to how we handle that situation.
Well, it is, but, but understand that the only thing that's legal are these sparkling devices. And from what I gather, what's been happening are not technically the use of sparkling devices, but they are in fact illegal fireworks. So even if there's a local permit requirement, there still wouldn't be any kind of authorization to use what amount of illegal fireworks, things that are shooting into the air and exploding, those are still illegal.
But if, if an individual brings in a licensed individual that has the proper permits to blow those off.
I guess. That's where we need to look at.
Right. Okay. I, I came in late. I was, I wasn't here in the beginning of the meeting, so I apologize.
There we need to look at some kind of temporary event or mass gathering permit.
Okay. All right. I don't mean to rush you on it, but I, it's, I anticipate probably within the next week to two weeks, we may be experiencing the same situation. God forbid that someone gets injured as this person. This person that was injured was, I'm not going to get into all the details, but it's a serious injury here that the individual suffered. So I mean, it was on, on the borderline of, of a fatality basically. So. It's something that it's not taken very lightly. I know we're not taking it lightly. We're going to be issuing what we have to issue here.
Bob, there was a recent arrest, I think it was Coming Street in Housick Falls, which was done by the Rensselaer County Sheriff's Office for what seemed to be a, quite a bit of drugs. And I also see there was two overdoses in the village. Is there an uptick on illegal drugs floating around the village?
Yes. And I'm not trying to be elusive. I'm going to say yes. I mean, there's other things going on too that I don't want to get into. But, but privately I will with you. I hope everyone understands and respects that comment that I just made. But as to the overdoses, there is an increase. It's just two for the month of May. We had an overdose last night that unfortunately the person passed away. And you know, that's an investigation now that we, we've tied into the DEA. So I've had a meeting last month with other agencies and we've talked about trafficking that's coming from Vermont, Massachusetts and from the cities that are coming down seven to our village. So we are looking at it.
Yeah. Do you know, do you know where the guy that was arrested on Coming Street, where he was selling? Was he selling in the village or was it going across into Vermont?
It was more of a distribution type situation. I don't think there was a lot going on at that particular house local. And what I mean by that, I think it was, a lot of times these places are being used as a halfway house where it's being stored and then shipped from here to other areas. So in this particular situation, I think there was a limited amount that was being sold out of the house. And again, I, you know, it's a pending case. I can't get into a lot of the details on it, but we do find in the past through intelligence that's gathered and passed back and forth between our agency and other agencies is that, you know, a lot of this stuff is coming through. They're not as much selling it because they see that there's eyes that are on, on them at different times. But so they're quietly, might bring the stuff in, hold it for a week or so and then move it out. But with these overdoses that are going on, these are overdoses that are also prescribed drugs that are being used and abused. So that is a, that's a concern as well to us. We're seeing a lot of this, these overdoses are involved with fentanyl. We're seeing a lot of these overdoses are involved with fentanyl. I don't think the people realize the seriousness of what these drugs are. I mean, you know, they get it, they don't know where it came from. It's being cut with other substance to make it more than what the person originally bought it for so they can resell it or just they try to spice it up themselves, so. It's becoming a little bit of a concern and problem.
So it's mostly opioids, Chief?
It's a little bit of everything, Deb. It's not just one particular thing. I mean, we've seen heroin. We have an open case with heroin here in the village that resulted in a death. We've seen the fentanyl, which has resulted in a death. So it's, you know, they cut that heroin and they use that fentanyl in all types. I mean, people think that marijuana is legal now and, you know, you can buy it, which you can. I mean, it's pretty strict on how you can buy it, but the local individual says, well, I've got some extra, so I'll sell it. And, you know, all of a sudden, that particular bag of weed has got some fentanyl in it. And all of a sudden, someone, you know, ingests that and boom, we have a problem.
And what about, like, meth or cocaine?
All that. I mean, one particular, we, you find these throughout. When we had a case where an individual got in an accident back about four months ago and was transported over to Bennington. And when I got there, she had a number of bags of the heroin on her. So the blood test just came back recently and we were able to, we're gonna be infected with rest on that. So it's not just one particular drug. It's all. It's whatever that person chooses to use that particular day. And a lot of it is being mixed with the alcohol and, you know, you're drinking and then they go from the alcohol to an illegal substance and that creates even more bigger problems. And they're also becoming more violent as well. I mean, in a particular case that we had here on a DWI a couple of weeks ago, the individual, you know, decided that he was gonna fight with the officers here at the station. So it's not just the friendly individual that went out and got drunk for the night and he got arrested for DWI and he sits here and, you know, says, I made a mistake because of the type of drugs that they're taking. And they mix it with the alcohol. They become very violent.
So, Bob, if residents see people coming and going to a certain spot, cars coming at different hours of the night, they should call police?
Yes, I think, you know, we have a thing on Facebook where they can, they can get ahold of us on that. But I think we're gonna start looking at trying to put together a hotline on the phone system so that they can call in and leave the message directly on that. And that phone will automatically dial to my cell phone and I'll get the information. Again, we're not asking people to be snitches. We're not, we're not asking for people to do that. We're asking people to be aware of their surroundings and their neighborhoods. And, you know, when you use the word snitch, they think, oh, my God, I'm gonna be labeled. All the information is confidential. We're not asking the person's name as to who's calling it in. We're just asking for the details of what they're calling.
That was very exciting info, Harold. All right.
The other thing too, real quick, and I don't mean to take up time, the mental health, we've got another officer that's into the training. So we're gonna have about four of our officers that have gone into some intense training on mental health cases. And one particular case last week, the crisis unit came out from St. Connecticut up here to assist with us on a mental health case. I'm hoping to be able to try to get a crisis team that's a little bit closer than St. Connecticut to respond to not just our needs, but, you know, whether it's in Pittstown or Berlin or Petersburg, so we're working on that as well.
Thanks, Chief. Any other questions from trustees? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve these reports.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Bobby. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Close, abstentions, carries. Thanks, Chief.
All right, I'm gonna step out right now, guys. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, code enforcement report. And I will just mention that I have listed a bunch of properties under old business that I have also highlighted here on this part of the slide. So, Mark, if you wanna take away with your normal report and maybe speak about those on the agenda, I can either show them to you or you can just go to them, however you wanna take it.
All right, well, my report's there for everybody to look over. If anybody has any questions on the actual report, I can try and answer the items, discussion items, beginning. And Andy, Andy and I did meet a couple of Fridays ago. So to talk about some of these things, so eighty-two Elm Street, we're moving forward with the process. I think the next step, and Andy can chime in here, would be for the board to approve a resolution condemning that barn. I think the original plan was to keep moving forward with this pending, you know, we know it's gonna be sold or it was on the tax block auction, so we'll see if it sells. We did make it clear with the county, the county put it on the auction website or had the auctioneers put it on there, that that would be a criteria of removing that barn. So if somebody does buy that property, it's been made clear the barn has to come down. But, you know, we stand ready in the wings in case somebody buys it and tries to let that property sit like we've experienced with other properties that we'll move forward it because that barn does need to come down.
Right. Mark, I watch them and you're right. We've, we reviewed that and knew that this particular property was on the county auction list. Mark did reach out to the county, made sure that they knew and should be listed that the barn would need to be demolished as being unsafe. I think Mark will continue to monitor with the county to see if someone completes a private purchase and then take care of that. And if not, Mark's already obtained a more recent supplemental engineering report identifying the fact that the property is structurally unsound and constitutes an unsafe building. And if we do need to move forward, we've got our forms ready. Mark will do a short report. I will prepare the resolution in order that would indicate that the property is unsafe. The barn would need to be demolished and removed. And we'll go through the process that you're familiar with on taking down unsafe structures. But for right now, things are ready to go, but Mark was just monitoring with the county auction.
Right, so we should have an answer, I think, on that next, for next month's meeting, one way or the other. You know, either we, either we pass a resolution to take it down and we do it ourselves or the new property owner will be doing it. They'll have a building permit, a demo permit, take that down. The next one up is sixty-two Mechanic Street, and I think, I really think the village board already approved it. Maybe just Andy and I and Marie need to just come up with a wording to put that out there. I don't know if there's any special criteria the board's looking for, but I think we pretty much decided to sell it as is. There are some people, I think, that are interested in it in the wings. You know, it'll involve legs, people in there to show it. I think it is safe enough. Neil and I went in there, we hadn't been in there in a while, so we went in there a couple of weeks ago. It wasn't nearly as musty as it used to be, but it's not getting any better. The foundation wall has collapsed and more. So it's time, either, you know, let's see if we can get rid of it.
Yeah, it's not as musty because the air's flowing through from the foundation being caved in.
I knew somebody would chime in with that.
You can see, when you drive by, you can see right in the building. I know.
So I think on that one, I don't, Andy, would we need some kind of a motion just to move forward with that, to put an ad in the paper or, you know?
Right. Some formal board act to, I know you did this previously and put it out for bid with certain conditions attached to that and no bids were received. There should be a similar, and it can be done through motion, to move forward and advertise that property for sale. And if the proposal would be in the as-is, where-is condition and see if the village received any bids that it wanted to move forward on. And Mark did forward over the advertisement for bid that was used previously a few years ago. And we will edit that and mark it up so that it would indicate that the property is being sold in an as-is condition.
I think one of the.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
I think one of the problems is that when we're putting these properties off for bid, as we have the past, they could come out in this legal notices and only people that are looking for certain things look in the legal notices. Could we try something like Tri-City Auctions or Uncle Sam Auctions, whatever they are, so we get more visibility on the property for sale?
Hmm, Kevin, that I will look into. I, I just wanna confirm it is village-owned property. You're seeking to sell it. You have the authority to sell it. I wanna make sure that rather than advertising for bid, some type of private auction. Let me look into that.
Sure.
Were we gonna put a stipulation, Mark, that they had to show what they were gonna do with it or what? It wasn't, I know we discussed this back a few months ago and I'm.
We tried that one time ago and no one took, no, no one bid.
I think no matter what, they're gonna have to bring it up. They're gonna need a building permit. And the way I've been working with some of these is just to do like a rehab building permit. We kinda throw a number at it, you know, we keep it affordable. And, you know, so no matter what, before people move in there, they're gonna have to bring it up to code, so that part of it.
It's gonna have to be up to code. Okay, that's, okay. Okay, that's all I wanna make sure. Just somebody's not gonna go in there and, you know, throw a bunch of, you know, patchwork on it and then, okay, it's open for rent, you know, for, we got two apartments and we'll be back at square one in another five years. So that's all I'm just worried about. That's all.
Yeah, I'll try. You know, the thing of it is, is I do know, you know, some of the people that are interested, I, you know, some of them have a track record, you know, so that should help us, you know, people who have already showed an interest in it. I've been mentioning it to some of the, some of the investors, so.
As long as it's a good track record, I hope you're talking, those are the ones you should be near talking to.
Those are the ones I would reach out to, not necessarily.
So is our goal to have a motion ready for next meeting?
I. Motion tonight, can't we?
Can we, if we can, I'd just soon get it in motion tonight.
Absolutely.
Andy?
That absolutely can be done tonight, subject to finalizing both the language of the bid advertisement and the ability to use a private auction firm rather than simply advertising. If you wanna move forward tonight with those unknown, you can, to be subject to that. Or we could get answers to all of those and have it ready for your July meeting, set the discretion of the board.
I'm intent to allow Mark to speak, Mark and Andy to make these decisions after getting the information. I like it, passing it tonight, subject to those two points.
I would make that motion.
Definitely in favor of that. Yep, and I will second that, Craig.
All right, so Craig has made the motion. Bobby has seconded. Any further discussion? This will be to put out sixty-two Mechanic Street to bid, subject to finding out if we can auction it. And what was the other thing, Andy?
Just the final language of the bid advertisement.
Thank you. Any further discussion or thoughts? All in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposer abstentions? Carries, great, thank you.
Next up was the fifty-four Classic Street, the sidewalk issue. I don't know if any of the board took advantage. Neil did send a guy over there, cleared out a path to get there so you can kinda get in there and see what's going on. But, you know, and Andy's, you know, Andy's point on this one, we discussed it, is that this guy's in the wind. We just don't know where he is and that creates a little bit of a problem. But, you know, legally, I guess we need to look at what our rights are to go in. We know we have an issue. We know it needs to be fixed. You know, do we go ahead and do it and absorb the cost on that and then, you know, charge it back against the property owner, you know?
Property owner, you can't find him.
Through the taxes.
Yeah, if I could weigh in on that, I did look into that. And while there is a local law that the village has adopted dealing with unsafe structures and the ability to go in there and do the work and charge it back to the property owner, and if the property owner fails to pay, then it's levied against the property in the same nature as a real property tax. And Deb, that's how ultimately, even if the property owner, you don't know where they are, you do know where the property is, you do know where you send the tax bills, and ultimately, that cost is able to be legally re-levied as a tax against the property. And if it remains to be unpaid, it goes to the county and the county ultimately pays the municipality. That's, in fact, what happened with the demolitions on John Street and Spring Street within the last couple of years. But here, there's no local law dealing with, this is not an unsafe building or unsafe structure. This is simply an unsafe property, a sidewalk issue, an erosion issue. Mark, probably what you and I should do in the short term is look at, I, some municipalities have specific local laws dealing with sidewalk maintenance and repair requirements for that section of sidewalk adjacent to their properties. And that gives the municipality the legal authority to require that be done. And if not, then the municipality can, in the same manner as an unsafe structure or building, can go in there and do that. I think that's something that you and I need to look at over the course of the next month and report back to the board in July.
Mark, when Delaware Engineering is in town with me, looking at the sidewalks, we looked at that, that issue. And he, he was amazed about how it looked and what a danger it was. And he took pictures and also he'd maybe be able to offer another opinion on that. We wanna reach out to Robert Flores. He wasn't the engineer, but someone in the office was there and maybe can give you more details on their view of the property.
When was that, Kevin?
It was probably late, late winter.
Yep, I can do that. So, all right, so I'll work with Andy on that one then. And then next one was the mayor had reached out and asked for me to follow up on eighteen John Street, which I have done. I've sent out, I sent out a letter to the property owner because, you know, originally, I think in two thousand eighteen, it was deemed to be unsafe structure at that point by the engineer. And, you know, I think we're all, anybody that's looked at that building realizes that nothing has been done to that building. There was a, there was a window of opportunity that the engineer put in that letter if something were to happen immediately as far as repairs. And I'm of the opinion that nothing has happened since then. So I gave him, the owner, I sent him a notice of violation or a letter, I guess, given him to the June thirteenth to respond. And then, you know, we'll probably have to take the next step, which would be getting the engineer back in there, getting authorization to get into that building again, doing whatever we have to get in there to follow up. I'm sure, you know, I think we need to confirm nothing's happened, but I'm sure nothing happened. And I'm sure the building is in any better condition now, three, three years later than it was then.
Is he still in town?
I do not know.
Andy, if we don't get a response, can we formally approve that? If no response is given by the date, we can work on getting, we can give authority to Mark to get an engineer in there?
You can, but then there's simply gonna be some access issues on the private property. If you know where the property owner is and they give consent, that's one mechanism. But if you don't know where the property owner is or if there's no consent given, then we have to go in and formally request an administrative inspection warrant from the local court, which we can do to get access to the property. So you can certainly authorize, if there's no response from the property owner by June thirteenth, to authorize the commencement of further engineering inspection of the property.
Would someone like to offer that motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll give Deb the second because she appeared sooner than, I guess, Bob. Any further discussion on that?
So, Rob, he hasn't paid us the money for the demolition for the other building. Is that, re-levied on his taxes already or are we holding the bag on that?
Andy?
What we've learned from Denise is, yes, the procedure was utilized. They were re-leveed, the county did pay the village, and the village has paid off the financing, the bond on that, the actually ban on that demo work. So the village was made whole through the re-levee process.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Mark, are you okay with this motion?
Yes.
All right. Hearing no questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Well, that's everybody, so that makes it easier.
I'm sorry, I can step away. What was that motion?
It was a motion to authorize, oh, Andy, you do this better than I do. Uh, it was a motion to authorize, um, oh, Andy, you do this better than I do.
Marie, it was a motion to, to authorize the building department in the event. There's no response by June thirteenth from the owner of eighteen John Street uh, to pursue uh, a further engineering inspection.
I missed the uh, when I was young, the important skill of learning how to summarize with a few words. So thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Make the motion.
That was Kevin, second to my Deb.
Thank you. I'll try to stick with you for the rest of it.
All good.
Okay, uh, so moving on. Then uh, the last thing that I had is uh, since COVID began like last March. I have not done any of the biennial inspections. The only inspections I've really done is the uh, empty apartment inspections.
Mark, you missed the propane tank concern.
Whoops, I'm sorry, jumped over that one.
All good.
Um, so the propane tank concern up behind John Street that was brought up a couple of meetings ago, I think. Um, I have looked into uh, the, it wasn't just. It's not just the in-ground tank that they were concerned with. I'm seeing an issue with the. Above ground tanks that aren't. Set back off the property lines like my interpretation of the code is. So I did get, I did order and receive the new uh. NFP fifty-eight, but. After talking with Andy and I, I just, I felt like, you know, I am not really. Comfortable pulling, you know, uh, just. I guess going through without, without talking to somebody. So Andy was able to talk to, I think somebody at John Ranson. Got us a name of a consultant that they've used in the past. So I reached out to the consultant. I've kept Andy in the loop on this. Um, and I sent it, I've sent, sent these, the consultant. The information on it, a bunch of pictures. He's gonna look it over. Um, you know, I don't, I, because I'm not, I don't want to. You know, say like, you know, anything like uh, the, those four tanks have to, have to go away and now, now the guy can't use propane outback. And that wasn't even the original complaint. That's just something that I observed as part of the complaint. There's an issue going on there. So I just thought uh, an unbiased consultant. Uh, could help us uh, nail this thing down and, and make sure that we do it right. So. We're just waiting to hear back from that. Um, Andy, I don't know if you want to chime in anything with that?
Yeah, when I discussed it, I just thought it would be. Appropriate here to, to have. Uh, someone who's an expert on that specific topic. Uh, propane storage and compliance with NFPA. Uh, Mark certainly qualified, but I think in this case. Uh, it was important to reach out to a, an expert in that field and. Uh, that consultant will be rendering an opinion that Mark can then rely on uh, moving forward with, with those complaints.
I'm all for that. I think that's a great idea. Do you need any authorization from us to move on that, Mark?
No, I think that, that is something that I can, uh, that we can do. That's, that's kind of written in our laws that we can, that we can reach out to somebody. Uh, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that was my understanding. I could.
No, that is, quite frankly, quite frankly, part of the code enforcement, you know. Complaint, compliance, um, discretion within the building department. So. He's already reached out and, and, and uh, connected with the expert on that propane storage issue.
I see that Mr. Martin's hand was up. He most.
Yeah.
Just said, well, just one quick question there. Do we also have a local, local law on propane tank, tanks? Or is it in one of our codes?
Not that I'm aware of, Greg. That's a uh, you know, that is a, a code. It's an uh. NFPA fifty-eight, it's where the LPG comes under.
Right, right. I'm, I'm going back to when I was on the um, zoning board and we had one improperly located. And I just, I just don't remember going to the NFPA code that one.
No, but that's probably, you probably saw a uh, picture that showed where the tank locations can be. And that, that picture probably came out of the NFPA book.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I'm done.
Jim?
I'm just, I just wondering if there's a timeframe, you know, so I can. Know when to check back as to when the consultant might get back to, to Mark and render an opinion.
No, there's, no, we didn't discuss the time.
All, all I will add on that is that the, the particular consultant we reached out to was actually teaching. Uh, a week long course, so he was delayed a bit. But he indicated he had the information and he's currently working on it. So. I don't anticipate an extended period of time, but it does need a little bit of time to review the information.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Mark, you can hop that last one, sorry.
All right, so the last one is the, the, since uh, we stopped doing the biennial inspections uh, last March. And so we do have a local law that's kind of unique, I think, to the village uh, that. Um, we require rental property owners to have their rental properties inspected every two years. Uh, we stopped doing that because of COVID. We did continue. Uh, to do the pre-tenant inspections because the theory there was. The pre-tenant inspections are done after one tenant leaves and before another tenant moves in. So the apartments were always empty and I could go in and do the inspection. So now I think that we're starting to get solely the COVID behind us. Uh, I've actually uh. You know, Andy and I did talk about this too, because I think, you know, we can't legally, I, I'm concerned for the village. You know, we have this law in place that we go too far and we, we're not keeping up with these inspections that are a local law that we should be doing. So you know, we're a little more than a year behind now. So uh, I have, I mean, I had the COVID, so I had the antibodies, but I also went out and uh, got vaccinated. Um, so uh, at the end of this week, I will have my two weeks. And so I will, um, I should be good to go so that uh, that should not be an issue. I, I told the mayor this morning, I do carry a mask. I did inspection the other day with, with a tenant there. And I just asked going in, you know, would you like me to wear a mask? I have one right here with me. She, she was fine. No, you don't need it. So. Um, you know, I'll give those, I'll continue to give that option. Um, you know, but. So I'm, I'm safe. I'm not, I'm not gonna be causing an issue for anybody. I really think that we should. Uh, get back to the, the biennial inspection.
Trustees, thoughts, questions?
I can agree with that. Absolutely, but I, are you gonna? Well, I guess you'll figure it out, I'm sure, but. Because you missed a year, so do you start like?
What my, what my plan is, Deb, is to uh. Um, I actually had opened up some cases, because what I would do when, when the dates come up, I send out a letter. Saying, you know, telling the people that it's, it's due. So I had opened some cases already and we had to stop them. What I will do, and I have a, a, a schedule. Of the property, because I've been doing this long enough that I've established a schedule. So I will go back to. Probably January of last year and start with the properties that were scheduled. And just start over again and start working my way through from that point. Until I get to the point where I catch up, but. You know, I just, I, I need to. I need to keep it a manageable amount of properties that I'm doing so I don't get too buried.
Yeah, that's why. That's why I was asking, because it could get over, I was thinking.
Right, no, and I can't, I don't want to do them. I could, you know, technically I could do them all this year and then not have any inspections. For next year. So I need to, I need to spread things out too, so there's a steady workflow too.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Jim, I'll call any one minute. Any other trustees?
Yeah, there was one other landlord we had issues with at one point and. I believe his inspections are way behind and we need, really need to act on that one. Yeah. Put the village in jeopardy.
There was one um, that we were having some pushback and some back and forth on, and I spoke with Mark about that one specifically and. I'm gonna work with Mark and with Andy and just make sure we have an official. You know, letter that goes out just stating that these are starting back up and, you know, your expectations are to comply like everyone else is and that'll be that. Jim, I'm thinking you don't need to ask anything anymore?
Yeah, I was, I figured I would probably ask Mark. I can ask him on the side. I'm just curious how that works when you have multiple apartments. You know, like we, we just had some inspected because we had some new tenants who had, so if Mark were to come in. Mark, do you look at those two again or just what's left over in the rest of the building?
I, I have a discretion on that. So you know, I can, I take a number of things uh, you know, into account. So in your case, if I were to come in and do, let's say I wanted to schedule with you for next month. The biennial inspection on the building itself. Uh, I would exempt probably the apartments that we just looked at, you know, because we have a track record on those apartments. I, I'm perfectly comfortable not having to do those, you know. If it gets out to like. Four, six months, that it may be a little bit different, you know, scenario. Um, but for the most part, you know, your apartments are very good, they're very well maintained. Those are the types of things I take into account, you know, rather than because. My interpretation, interpretation on how it's built out is that billing out by the apartment. For overall building inspection, so. Yeah, try not to put too much of hurt in that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mark, do you think the village could have some kind of uh. Campaign, information campaign where we let people know what's, what they can and can't do in the village? For instance, or in the village, you can only have one unregistered car where. There's a lot of people, some people with three, four cars in their yard. And ma- maybe make it aware and then after a month or so, go out there and start giving tickets or uh, taking to court.
That's kind of what my job is. Uh, so I do try to make people aware. Uh, you know, I, I know that you brought one up to me recently and. And there are, I think the last time I looked, there were three cars there and I need to reach out and talk to him. Um, but that really is kind of my job. I try to make people aware of it. Um, you know, whether it's in a conversation or through a notice of violation.
Yeah, there's been this. There's been the same properties on Church Street where I know you've been there and you've talked to them. And in one case, they leave it right in the front yard and it's still sitting there.
They're allowed to have one, one unregistered vehicle still.
I know, but there's two. One has plates on it, but it's, they're not registered.
Okay.
At least, at least according to the registration stickers.
Uh, yeah, we can talk about that one. I have to review that.
Yeah. Just, I mean, there's cars down at Second Ward. There's, there's some places there with five or six cars. And I think maybe if we, maybe just. Let people know, hey, we've got a law, you're gonna have to do something about these cars. Hopefully it'd get taken care of without taking people to court.
Yeah, well, no, that's always the goal. I never want to take people to court. Always the goal is try and get compliance. So Kevin, if you see stuff and, and you're pretty good when you're out walking and stuff, let me know. I usually do follow up on stuff. You know, it, it may not be, you might tell me today, it might not be tomorrow. You know, I have a pretty long, an ongoing list, but I do get the stuff that. Eventually, I always get to it, so.
Yeah, it seems like the same, the same people over and over again and they, they make a little headway in some of the things you report and then they stop and. Then you probably, you have to probably go back and follow up on these things, but uh, I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Mark or comments? All right, good stuff. Uh, thank you, Mark, for moving on this. Thank you, trustees, for. All the things you've been weighing in on. Thank you, Andy, for the support, looking for a motion to prove the code enforcement report.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's, great. Clerk, uh, thank you very much again, Mark, and we just plowed through a bunch of old business stuff, which is exciting.
Thank you guys.
Uh, clerk, deputy clerk, anything you want to mention, Marie?
Real quick, the property taxes went out. Um, payments are coming in. They can only be made by check or by money order. They can be put in a black box in the front of the building twenty-four hours. Day, or they can come into us Monday through Thursday, seven thirty to three thirty. They cannot be paid online like the water utility bill, just uh, FYI.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'll um, entertain a motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk reports.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob Decker. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's. Highway DPW, Bobby, anything you want to highlight? Or Neil, I know you like to uh, to wax poetic for a while, if you're free to hop in. Is he still here? Yes.
Is, is Neil still on?
He is still on. He's hiding.
All right, Neil.
Shy.
Yeah.
Bobby, anything you want to highlight?
Um, no, just that, I, it's on, I noticed it's on the agenda as well, Rob. The uh. Just that Neil, you know, hiring a summer help uh. Or advertising for a full-time permanent highway position uh. You know, everything that's, everything that is on the Neil's highway department report is pretty much on the agenda. Um, we, we are, Neil and I have still working or discussing about the uh, potential dog park across from Highway Garage as well. So we're looking into that and then uh, we still need to find out if, you know. Legally, I mean, I guess that's something we need to ask Andy if we can. The village liability, how does that work if it's a village-owned dog park? Is, is that something that uh, is?
Right, Bobby. Yep, we, we can look at that, but, but in general, it would simply be contacting your. Uh, insurance broker indicating that that's gonna be added as a municipal facility. Okay, requirements are, yep.
Okay.
That's probably a thing that we could ask the village office to follow up on because I know in the past. Um, I've had to sign a bunch of different times the list of all the properties and buildings and stuff we own. Um, and we could probably get an estimate on how much it would change if we added a dog park. I don't think it would be very much because of how much we have already.
I'll look into that and let you know.
Thank you, Marie.
Um, Bobby? Did you, did you work out the, um, you talked to Neil about the signs, all the parking signs, because all. Some of that stuff still doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Some of the ones that were changed.
I think at this point, I think we're. Good for now until we do our summer look-through of all of the parking laws. And signs, and I think ideally. If we need to make further changes, I think we roll it into that. And if we do a big um, revision of the parking law and redo the overview and message it right, I think. Part of that would also be, if we're gonna do the signs, let's get a concrete plan on paper that we all agree on before we put it out. So I feel like we're good for now.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we need to definitely review the parking. The downtown, not just the downtown, the entire village parking issues.
Yes, as a big.
Address that as a whole.
Yes, big picture, I agree.
Because to do it piece meal is only gonna make more work for everyone involved, so.
Exactly, exactly. And the other thing is that Kevin had a great idea to maybe. I don't know how much it costs. I don't know if we could get a volunteer, maybe somebody, I don't know. That um, like an outside person who could look at the big picture. And maybe give us some guidance as to how to set up the parking. And how.
It's called a consult. And then nobody's, and nobody's free.
That's the truth.
Nobody, no, but villages and cities, but villages and cities hire consultants all the time and. Uh, a lot of the engineering firms we use for grants and everything else all have. Traffic engineers or, or planners that can, at least tell us, rather than us decide, oh, let's put a no parking here that says no overnight parking. And not, not have somebody that has history in, in making suggestions and uh. Parking regulations. I think it'd be very helpful. We have overall look. There's a, there's a problem with parking up, not just downtown, but up on Church Street near Stewart's, where you can't even see cars coming out of Stewart's.
Right, and I agree, Kevin, a hundred percent, because that's what Neil and I had talked about. When we talk about, we need to address the overall village parking because. Just where you're talking about that Stewart's location, right, there's an example of, of a landlord not having enough parking spots for the number of apartments in his building.
Not only that, but there may be um. There may be an issue with the fact that that location by Stewart's is actually at an intersection which may um. Require us to put a no parking spot there or, or put lines there. Neil, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, there's, there's New York State V and T laws that already classify most of these intersections. That's what I don't understand why the village doesn't have us go out like Stewart's Corner. And place up no parking signs. You know, there's, the traffic, traffic laws are there.
All right, Neil, and we um, when we sit down with. All right, Neil, when we, um, when we sit down with.
I don't see why we have to make up local laws for stuff that's already state V and T laws. And that's what I'm.
If, if there are places that the law exists that where we don't have an enforcement sign or lines down. When, and when you and Andy and I meet uh, to talk Woodsbrook's schedule, let's talk about this as well. And if you have a list of spots uh, where we should have no parking there and it doesn't there, like that spot at Stewart's. Especially in light of the fact that we've been reviewing um, the parking rules um, as they apply in that one location that we talked about a lot last meeting. Uh, we'll, we'll get moving on that and we'll get to the sign or the painting and, and again, it comes all the way back to messaging and making sure that property owner knows that. This is the situation, we have to put no parking there, it's a legal issue, it's the state law and so on and so forth.
Well, it just stands back to uh. The old property owner that used to have a brother that was on the village board and nobody pushed the issue back then. Well, we've got the laws on the books for parking spots per apartments, off-street parking. And you got a dangerous intersection, so, you know.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to and I don't know if I even want to know, but uh, you know, for my vantage point is if it's on the books, we're gonna enforce it. And if we don't have the proper lines down, tell me and we'll get it, we gotta move it.
You know, when I, I even got a request from the party department. And uh, school buses, you know, and I'm gonna have them put it in writing. Dangerous intersections and stuff like that, so we can. Make sure of all the, that kind of stuff is taken care of.
Marie, can you remind me to touch base with the school? And ask them if there are any dangerous uh, intersections in the village they're concerned about and we can uh, double check with the, the laws in the book and whatever. Uh, parking laws are on right now and see if we need to address that. Thank you, Neil, for that.
Okay.
The other thing is, like Neil said, it's enforcement. If we don't enforce them, the laws, it's, you know, the parking laws. Uh, whatever they are laws, then there, there's no point.
Yep.
Having the laws. So, you know, the same people keep breaking the parking laws and. It's frustrating.
And I.
Actually.
I think, Kevin, I'll, one more thing, I just wanted to say that when we look at the whole, whole parking thing as a big picture. I think we should somehow get input from business owners, residents, landlords. Um, people who go downtown, um, just get some input somehow from them. About what, what they see would, would work, or would be a good thing. That's all.
Kevin?
That's it, no, that's a great idea, Deb. I came across the 2004 parking plan for three of our, three or four of our parking lots. This came out right before the Route 22 construction, but it shows layouts and things like that of uh, our parking lots. The one across by the armory, which isn't ours, the Church Street lot and the one down by the river. Which uh, has been done since then with the bridge project, but it was quite interesting to see their perspective on our parking in the village.
Emily?
Um, I just wanted to say I like Kevin's idea of having a consultant. Um, my one suggestion would be that if we did go that route, they actually physically have to drive the streets and the roads multiple. Times, like, all, like, you know, just drive around, because looking at a map and. It, it doesn't actually give you the actual size width of the road. Um, what it looks like if you have the cars parking on the one side and the other side, what that's like to try to maneuver to get through. Things like that. I'm, I'm down with the consultant, but I just don't want them looking at maps and doing it. They physically would have to. Drive around like we do, you know?
Absolutely.
What about doing a comment? What about doing a comment period? We could do, easily do a comment period for like 30 days where people submit their emails with their issues and their concerns.
That's an excellent idea.
It wouldn't be that hard to do.
Perfect.
So those were just my suggestions, because, you know, at the end of the day, safety first. We don't want to see anybody get hurt, we don't want to see accidents. We don't want to see anything happen. And, you know.
Yeah, maybe.
That, that's the goal.
Right, and we need a no U-turn sign on John Street. Every day I see people making U-turns right in front of my shop. Crazy. And then the trucks come right, flying around the corner. It's nuts.
I can't even with those U-turns on John Street.
Not right, right in front of my shop, in the middle of John Street, while the, while the trucks or trailers are coming from either.
Saw one today. Saw one today, in a Jeep.
Yep, and it's not always one they can make in one shot either. Sometimes it's a three-point turn.
We're gonna sit an undercover cop there outside of Iron Coffee just to watch that and report it when it happens.
Yeah, that, and you could make a fortune giving those truck drivers some tickets for going so fast around the corners.
All right, anything else regarding the highway report? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve it.
A motion.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries, I forgot to say one thing about it. I, I did tell Neil, I know with all the um, products we have this summer and the possibility of doing a lot of demo work. I did suggest looking at possibly getting a third uh, summer help employee and trying to figure out how to make that work in the budget. I think that would be very valuable. Especially later in the summer and the fall when a lot of that stuff's going on, so just FYI, we may be getting another one. All right, uh, sewer report, I gave you guys the numbers, nothing really out of the ordinary. Uh, to report and our final fiscal year numbers were in. Um. Which was an, it was an up month, but still a little bit lower than previous years, uh, than the previous year's income. And next report, I'll start setting up a third year to keep track of it. Um, hearing no questions, comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the sewer department report.
Motion.
Thank you, I only need a second.
Second.
All right, second, everybody. Feel free to give that to whoever you want to, Marie. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries, and finally, oh, um, I will have one more after this water department, uh, water report. Um. Emily, anything you want to highlight?
Nothing that really needed to be highlighted. Um, I did reach out to Jim, which I do before every meeting. Um, unfortunately, we weren't able to connect before the meeting, so the one thing he wanted to talk about, we didn't get a chance to talk about.
Okay.
But it has to do with something going on tomorrow.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I will approve or look for a motion to approve water department report.
A motion.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Emily, for the discussion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie, thank you. I did want to bring up community service. I had a conversation uh, with Jerry McCullough today about community service. We're starting to get some requests and some projects that would be great for community service. I know we've been waiting for COVID. Um, to alleviate is alleviating. Um, Jerry is still looking for some guidelines from us. How to handle some of the, the more interesting situations such as in the past, if. Someone had a scheduled community service and they called and said, I don't feel well, he'd be like, yeah, you still need to come. But now if it's, I'm afraid of COVID, how does he handle that? Um, but he was thinking it would probably make some sense and he would be willing to start doing some limited hours. Uh, for the next, um, you know, few weeks to a month as we start to figure out. Um, so, some more guidelines as they relate to COVID or wait until things relax regarding COVID. So trustees, what are your thoughts on restarting community service at limited hours over the next few weeks?
If Jerry's in favor of it, if he's not opposed to it, I certainly think it's a great idea.
Me too.
I agree.
Um, great, um, Andy, do we need to uh, approve anything for that or just, we just make that decision? Or I would make that decision as mayor and say we're restarting?
Correct, uh, there doesn't need to be any formal board action, you can just recommence the community.
All right. Then we will recommence it. I'll tell Jerry that and he'll reach out to the court, um, to give them a heads up. And, and to Chief Ashton, we'll, we'll move from there. Thank you, guys. Uh, minutes, the only minutes we had uh, were from the May 11th regular meeting. Were there any questions or comments or things need to be changed on that? If there weren't, I will accept a um. A motion for the uh, approval of the May 11th regular meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion, Rob.
All right, thank you, Craig. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, Carrie, it's great. Trustee committee reports, I'm gonna go in the order of who I see on the screen. Deb, you're up first. Anything? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, I haven't got anything. Um, I have questions and comments.
Mm-hmm.
Wait, my device just went off, let me just turn it back on. I have this new, really cool device. Okay, couple of things I wanted to mention, um, just uh. They're not necessarily my committees, but um. Um. The mural update we're gonna do later? Do you want me to do that now?
Um, I'm fine either way.
Doesn't matter to me. Um, um, Bob, is Chief Ash still there?
He hopped off, let me see if he's still on.
It doesn't matter, you could tell him, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Um, he's off.
If you call, if you call. Um, the number I was given not too long ago. Maybe a couple of months ago, a few months ago, to call the Who's It Falls, the Police Department. If it's not an emergency, like if you just want to tell them something's happening or whatever, um. It's not the correct one, I don't know, I can't, I think it was the dispatcher who gave me the number. But anyway, it says, leave a message for Chief Ash, press one, leave a message for um, an officer. Um, press two, but that, that's somehow, that's never checked, nobody knows what that is, and there's a new number, so.
So there's a local number we have, if someone wants to just touch base with something here in a non-emergency way, and that's the number. That you have that goes to a voicemail for Chief Ash or the officers. Um, that is something we manage as part of our phone system, I'm not sure why the, the box for the officers isn't being checked on a regular basis.
I don't know, the, the officer I spoke to said that he didn't know anything about that. That must be an old thing.
Marie, can you add, add that for me to check with the chief on my to-do list coming out of this?
Just if anybody, you know, needs to call locally, there's, I mean, the, the officer who came. Who I spoke to gave me the correct number, but um. I don't know, that old number's still there, if you call it and you think you're leaving a message and then nothing happens.
So, like, if you try to leave a message, it just doesn't allow you to leave a message?
No, you can leave a message, it's just.
But no one checks it, so.
Yeah. So, I don't, that's not that big a deal. Um. I wanted to mention, I can put my Who's It Rising hat on or my trustee hat, but either way, it's awful what happened to those flowers on the bridge.
Yeah, that's just.
That was, I don't know who did it, I don't know why they did it. Um.
Tell me, I didn't hear anything.
Well, you know those beautiful planter boxes that were put on the shop bridge? Um, last, whatever night it was when all the fireworks were going on and Bob was having just the most awful night in months. Um. Somebody took all those flowers and we were planning to grow, you know, keep them growing, so we have our own bridge of flowers like Shelburne. Massachusetts, but somebody came and just dug them all up and threw them all over the place. Just, and it was real. No, and it just, we don't know who it was, but Chief Ash is looking into it. Um, but I, I just wanted to say that it was, it was a real gut punch to Who's It Rising. To Marion Zwickelbauer, who carefully planned the plantings and the, and the boxes and made it look really nice, so. Um, yeah, just, I just want to put it out.
True, Dick.
That sucks that somebody did that.
Yeah, urine clings. Awful.
Um, but I do also want to thank the person whose name, I, I don't know her, but who went out the very next day and went to True Value. And replanted the boxes, not with the same flowers, but you know, with, with what she could get at True Value, who discounted the plant. The price of the plants when they found out what happened, so I wanted to thank them.
Yeah, that was Kayla, Kayla Ruble was the person's name.
Yes, yes, it was, so I wanted to thank the two of them for. Uh, the True Value and Kayla to, for doing that, but whoever did it, don't do that anymore.
Agreed. Thanks, Deb. Uh, Bob Decker?
Yep. Okay, well, um, nothing major in the finance world, I'm very anxious. To see the final budget to actuals for the year to. Just take a look and see what we got going on. Um, I was over in the office today talking to Denise. I just wanted an update, I think you might have talked about it, Rob, about the server problems we have.
Yeah, this is something that was going on before, yeah, before you got here. Um, we had a server, um. And our, our tech support, when I first got here, was a, a guy who did a really nice job for, for a really good, good price. His availability uh, has changed, um, it's less and we've uh, in a sense have a fairly old server. Um, and we are in the process and we've budgeted for um, putting some serious money into investing in a new server. And um, getting a new regular tech support firm, so if, you know, something goes down here. Or if there are software questions on some of the big programs that our office staff uses, we'll have a regular occurrence. Since I've been here, we've kind of had like three different people sort of on and off, not really specific, and we just kind of want to. Iron it out and get things set and established. And that's what I'm gonna be doing, is I'm gonna be, we've gotten some quotes and I want to speak to each directly. Um, to just talk through, because I have a lot of technical computer backgrounds, um, to talk about options and what we need and kind of fine tune. What we're looking for, so we can get quotes and then basically get a new server going and get a service, and that would also include. Um, migrating everything from the old server over to the new server, which can be uh, time-consuming.
Great, well, if you need anything, let me know, I'll give you a hand, also, um.
About $10,000.
That's not gonna happen.
Just kidding.
Also, maybe, you know, we have to look at our backup power supply too, maybe has that had a problem or something to do with it?
Yeah, that, that is in rough shape and I'm not sure if it's worth getting a new battery for the existing one we have or getting a just completely brand-new unit to handle that. Which is another question I'm having with the tech support guys.
Great, okay, that's about all I have, but like I said, if you need anything, just let me know, I'll help you.
Thank you.
Yep, you got it.
All right, Kevin?
Um, since the new uh, guidance has opened up for. Uh, summer concerts and that kind of thing, we put together the Who's It Falls Summer Concert Series with uh, sponsors. And uh, we've scheduled three for the summer with the finance we have, and Maria also came up with someone who donated the money for one of the other concerts. And the dates are July 17th, the Blues House Rockers. Um, Neon Avenue on August 6th and West Side Drive on August 28th.
That's great, that's terrific.
The other thing.
Great job with that, Kevin, great job.
If they're working on the gazebo, I can make other arrangements to have J C Tractors and use one of their platforms for. Uh. August or even in July.
Well, we can plan around you and keep that in mind, but what, that's, I'm glad you mentioned that, because as we get closer to actually doing the work, we'll make sure that we talk to you and include you in that. So thank you for bringing that up.
All right, that's it.
Kevin, what was the name, well, I'm sorry, what was the name of the group on, on the 6th of August?
Uh, Neon Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
It's uh, they play. Uh, a little bit of Grateful Dead music, I don't know, maybe Marie can describe it better, but uh, he's a local guy, he's in the band, uh. His name is Urban, I'm not sure of his first name, but he uh, he's played.
Oh, Mike Urban.
Mike Urban.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
They used to be Not Dead, they've been.
Yeah, not dead yet, they used to be. Yeah, Not Dead Yet, they used to be, right, yeah.
And there's four of them now in the band, and they play a lot of
Yeah, I've listened to some of their YouTube videos, they're very good.
They have a nice following.
One of our recent high school music department graduates has started his own band, so maybe we'll get to get them here in a couple of years.
Great.
As many weekends as we can afford, this is a big, this is a big deal, not many towns have good live music every
True. Anything else Kevin?
No, we're just closing out the Walter Ray Wood Project, and just in this past week, we Got orders for five more benches, so we're up to 30, and I guess this is probably gonna be it, because I think I'm putting the fabricators to To work for the rest of the summer, trying to get these all done.
Awesome.
That's fabulous, thank you.
Sure is, thank you. Alright Bobby?
Wait, benches, we were gonna look into if there were old benches that were usable, maybe putting a couple down by Haka. It's one, not, I just didn't want that to fall off the radar.
Alright, I'll talk to Neil about that, and Neil, I also needed to bring up, there's a couple A little bit of damage has been done to one of the swinging things at Kelly Street, it's inside that little dark wood building, they're, the, the swinging, whatever that bench is called, has Couple pieces of wood that were ripped out by some, some wonderful folks, and there's some screws sticking out that just need to get removed, it's a pretty simple job, I just keep forgetting to mention it. So Marie, just remind me to talk to Neil about those two things.
I got it.
Bobby Ryan?
Okay, the only thing I have is, I went to the transfer station today, and Neil, you still on? I'm not sure if you're Neil still on or not, but we need to get some calcium. Do, do we have calcium to put down up to the transfer station Neil? It's like a dust storm when you drive in there.
Yeah, I usually get bags of calcium from Curtis Lumber.
Okay.
You, you can buy bags for that.
So, can we put that on the radar? Things to do? The other thing, Neil, how about the condition of, do we, do we need to take a look at some of the, the conditions of the concrete and stuff up there as far as The pads and then are under the dumpsters, cuz like, there's some pretty Good gaps in there underneath the dumpster, and I don't know if that's the way it's supposed to be, or if that's, needs to be addressed, but Can we take a look at that sometime soon?
I've been wanting to do some stuff up there, but, you know, I think, I don't know how much money we've actually got to spend.
No, 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 I understand that too, right, that's why I'm at Asking if we can go up there and figure out what needs to be done and get an estimate or whatever. The other question I had is, there's recyclable dumpster up there, right, that's, that But village residents get the recyclables picked up? Yep. So, who, so, isn't it mostly the, is it town residents who use the recycling up there, or, and do we get any revenue from the town for that?
Most of the garbage and recycling is generated from town residents. So, whatever.
Town outside the village, correct, not the, okay.
We get some revenue, but it's not, I think, what it should be, and that's something we Will, will address when we finally get together and talk about pricing changes.
Okay.
Which again, is something that we've had on Old Business for like eight months, and my bad for not getting it.
Oh no, no, I just was curious if we were getting any revenue, you know, because We're paying to get it hauled away, but the town residents are, are utilizing it, not the village residents.
Yeah, we're paying
So many recyclables at their house that they can't
We're paying, every time that, every time that Recycling dumpster is dumped, it costs $150, we're not paying anything for the material itself, it's just for the hauling. But it's $150, it usually happens once or twice a month. So, it could be $250 a month.
So, right.
$300 a month.
Okay. But that's something we can look into, Rob, too?
Yep, definitely.
Okay.
Anything else Bobby?
Okay. No, that's all I had, was transfer station stuff today, and, and the, the dog park that Neil and I are gonna look into, so.
Awesome. Alright, thank you. Emily and then Craig?
I have a meeting coming up with our Schwanma on the 24th. Nothing on the Greenway that I've seen, I've got no emails. Looking forward to being able to be in person, so that we can really hammer out some things we've been wanting to. So, just looking forward to that, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you Emily, Craig?
Got nothing tonight, Rob.
Alright. Concise, the way we like it when we're near hour three. Alright, moving on, we still have the public hearing for Local Law Number Two. Does anyone wanna speak regarding that? If not, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing number two, or public hearing on Local Law Number Two.
Make that motion.
Thank you Craig.
Second.
Thank you Deb, further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Poses or abstentions? Alright, motion carries. On Old Business, looking to keep up the streak and table this discussion once again until the summer.
Motion.
I've already done some background on this, so I have some information once we do get going on that.
That is great to hear Kevin, awesome, I'm trying to get through this school year and then I'm gonna dive into A few big projects, and this is one of them, so thank you. So we have a motion from Emily, you need a second?
Oh, second.
Bob, thank you, all in favor of tabling? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, poser abstentions? We've already talked through these old business items, so we don't need to do anything act on those. The last one, Andy, can you give us a quick update on the latest guidance on the ARPA funds?
I can, and I'll be brief, recall that there was interim guidance, there is an interim final rule that's still Out from the Treasury Department, the comment period on that runs through early July, and then presumably the Treasury Department will be issuing The final rule, and that'll get published, I would think in July. The Treasury Department has come out with guidance Primarily through responses to FAQs, they just published one this afternoon. The, the broad brush of this is, whatever funding is, is ultimately provided to the village, the question's gonna be, what are eligible uses? As it looks right now, there's gonna be certain categories that will be allowable uses. Those will include anything that the village expended in direct response to the COVID Pandemic, direct responses would be purchasing equipment, additional cleaning, disinfection, Things like that, that were directly, direct expenditures to respond to the pandemic. The next one is a little bit more complicated, and I think Denise, and it sounds like Bob Decker too, may be involved in this, which is A calculation of the loss of, loss of general revenue that the village experienced, and that's done on a pre-pandemic Full fiscal year compared to a fiscal year during the pandemic To calculate an amount that you would be entitled to in terms of lost revenue Directly related to the pandemic, that's how the law and, and at least the guidance thus far is set up. You look at that on a municipality-wide basis, that would include Real property tax, mortgage recording tax, sales tax revenue, any other sources of revenue, and you simply do the comparison. I will tell you, that's, if those of you that have been through the PPP loan process, that's the same mechanism that was used in that program To determine a business's eligibility in terms of dollar amount for their, for their loan. It's gonna be a similar approach for ARPA to determine on a municipal basis, what can you determine was a loss of revenue, just comparing pre and post pandemic fiscal years. And that, that money used for general municipal purposes, although it's likely that there'll be some more definition on that in the final rule. And then let, a couple of easier ones are water Water sewer projects are allowed, broadband internet projects are allowed, and if you've got direct municipal expenses for public safety staff, you know, EMS, emergency, that might include police, we're gonna look at that, but it doesn't cover general Salary expenses, it was things that were above and beyond general salary that you could attribute to a COVID pandemic response. We're gonna have much more guidance on this come July, but that's where we are currently right now.
Thank you Andy, and I know, I think, sounds like July is when we'll set that, um, group of people to, to make some requondations on how to spend those, use those funds.
Well, as I say, that, the, the comment period is through early July, and then the final rule, I presume, will come out later July, so that may actually be an, an August issue, but who will play that by year?
Thank you Andy, any questions trustees to, for any, on that? Alright, hearing none, let's talk about the Rogers Avenue Water Tank, and we talked about this before, it's our intention to go for this again. We have a resolution in front of you on the screen right now, this is a resolution scheduling public hearing on the intent to apply For CDBG funding in the public infrastructure category, and again, there's requirements before we Put in the application deadline at the end of July, one of those requirements is a public hearing. So, by doing this resolution now, it allows us to set it, and I threw in the time The date of July 13th, which is our next meeting at 6:00 PM, and Kevin, I included the new highway garage in language, which means this will officially lock us into the highway garage Next month, there's much rejoicing on Kevin's side. Andy, is there anything else you wanna summarize on this?
Nope, you summarized it well.
So, I will read the, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board authorizes the holding of a public hearing to provide further information about the CDBG program And allow for citizen participation in, in the development of any proposed grant applications, and/or to provide technical assistance to develop Alternate proposals, comments on the CDBG program, or proposed projects will be received at this time, the hearing Is being conducted pursuant to Section 570.486, Subpart 1 of the CFR, and in compliance with the requirements Of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1924 as amended, the Village of Who's It Falls will hold a public hearing on July 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM at the New Highway Garage. Posting of notice of public hearing is hereby ordered, I'm looking for someone to offer the resolution and second it.
Do we have to have another public hearing, even though this is essentially the same Information that we did the last time?
Unfortunately, we do.
Right, Kevin, I'll confirm that, it is a new grant round, so the same procedure applies, so yes, there is a necessity for another public hearing.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Thank you Kevin.
Second.
Thank you Deb. Further discussion? Roll call vote please Marie.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
O'Malley? Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Decker?
Yep.
Trustee Marpy? Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All in favor?
Alright, I don't know if it happens on your end, but every once in a while, I hear the yes before the name, and it just kind of creeps me out, but that's the internet. Alright, let me go back to our new business here. So, last chance for anybody to speak regarding the laws, I said I would throw this out in there, cuz some people may have been on, at the Delgado Town Hall. Trustees, do you wanna move forward on adopting these laws? If you want to, does, do you guys wanna move forward on adopting the Chicken Law, Local Law Number One?
Yes!
Make it happen.
Alright, in that case, let me share up the glorious resolution. Here we go. Okay, this is Resolution Adopting Local Law Number One of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls. I think we have been through the whereas statements, and this whole situation ad nauseam, Andy, is it okay if I go right to the now therefore? Oh, no, there is one thing I wanna mention, this resolution does include I'm gonna read right here, whereas upon review of the environmental assessment form, and with due consideration of potential significant adverse environmental Impacts of this action, the Board of Trustees has determined the adoption of a negative declaration NEGDEC under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEAGAR, or SEAGRA, depending how you say it, with respect to the introductory Local Law Number One of 2021. I did wanna state that that is part of this resolution.
Right, and I'll just concur with Rob, there was an environmental assessment form completed for this local law. We prepared a proposed Part Two and Three indicating Either no or small potential significant adverse environmental impacts from This action, which is the adoption of the law regulating the keeping of chickens, and that a negative declaration is appropriate, so the resolution does Both adopt the, the negative declaration, and if approved, Rob, you would just execute and keep on file the Part Three Of that SEAGAR form, and, and the balance you can review.
Alright, thank you, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Who's It Falls In regular session duly convened as follows, one, a negative declaration is hereby adopted Pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act with respect to introductory Local Law Number One of 2021. Number two, introductory Local Law Number One of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls Be and hereby is adopted as Local Law Number One of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls. And three, Local Law Number One of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls shall be filed in the Office of the New York State Department of State In compliance with all applicable legal requirements, and the Village Clerk is hereby directed To cause such filing to be completed, I'm looking for someone to sign away their life And be the, I mean, someone to offer the resolution, Deb is offering the resolution?
I'll second it.
Is that Bobby?
Yeah, it's me.
Alright, fantastic, and further discussion on this? Hearing none, Marie, roll call vote please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter, yes?
Oh, please.
Decker?
Yep.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes, I just hope people do right by these poor chickens.
Mayor Allen?
I'm yes.
And we have Deputy Mayor Ryan. All in favor?
It'll do, yes.
Amen to the chickens.
Alright, my, my favorite part was when Craig was asked, and all you could hear was cricket, cricket, cricket in the background, it was amazing. Chicken law is officially passed. Fantastic, fantastic. Alright, Local Law Number Two, are we ready to move forward on Local Law Number Two? I am ready, if someone tells me they're ready?
I'm ready.
Alright, let's do this. This will be Resolution Adopting Local Law Number Two of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls. We've already stated this is a adjustment to the zoning map in a specific parcel, Andy has gone through all of the specifics previously in the meeting, and Once again, the neg, negative declaration is part of this, anything else I need to say? Andy?
Nope, again, that's a good summary.
Beautiful, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Who's It Falls in regular session duly convened as follows, one, A negative declaration is hereby adopted pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act With respect to introductory Local Law Number Two of 2021. Number two, introductory Local Law Number Two of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls Be and hereby is adopted as Local Law Number Two of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls. Three, Local Law Number Two of 2021 of the Village of Who's It Falls Shall be filed in the Office of the New York State Department of State in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, and the Village Clerk is hereby directed to cause such filing to be completed. Looking for someone to offer the resolution and second it.
I'll offer it, Rob.
Thank you Craig.
I'll second it.
Thank you Bobby. Further discussion? Roll call vote please Marie.
Hey, we had Trustee Pine, yes. Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes ma'am.
Trustee Decker?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Marpy.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
I'm yes.
And we had Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
All in favor of that. Thank you.
Bill, you still on there?
I'm half asleep, but yes.
Awesome. You were, I'm assuming you were still on waiting to see how that one happened, right?
Exactly.
Well, there you go, sir.
Have a good night.
Hey, you too.
Take care, Bill.
Take care, Bob.
All right, moving on. Yeah.
Just done that uh, secret form as well. There was a part two and three prepared. If he could execute that and keep that on file as well.
Got it. All right, Department of Public Works. Uh, first off, we are looking for a motion to advertise for full time DPW employee. This would be an MEOL, which is a contract language thing. And the individual must have either a Class B CDL license or a permit.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bob Decker.
Second.
Second.
Doesn't matter. We're all seconded.
Everyone is seconded. Marie, pick. Further discussion? Neil, I'm assuming that's all good?
Yep.
All right, all in favor? I.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, motion carries. Um, we have and trustees, I sent this uh, the the two applications to you. It's attachment number eight in your email. Um, Andy, do we mention their names specifically? And do we do the motions one at a time for the two employees?
Uh, you you certainly can mention their names, uh, and they should be done one at a time.
Okay, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to hire Ethan Young Kunish as a summer help for the DPW.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Bobby and Bob. Um, further discussion as a reminder, uh, although I don't know if it would apply here, Andy, because they're technically not personnel yet, but if there was a personnel thing we'd have to discuss, we would have to move to executive session. Which is easy to do.
It is. In generally, you go into executive session to discuss details of personnel matters and that could include you know, personal information, interview information that that shouldn't be discussed publicly. But the actual uh, hire needs to be done in open session.
All right, so I just mentioned that for new trustees who may not have been through hiring process. If you ever wanted to go to executive session to discuss something, you would just ask to go into it and we would, you know, likely all go for it. Um, just because of things get discussed. So anyway, uh, the motion, we did get a motion to second, right? Yes, to hire Ethan Young Kunish. Any further discussion? Hearing none, looking uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposer abstentions? I don't think so, because that was everybody. Great. And the second employee uh, who I think is a returner, is that correct, Neil?
Yep.
Awesome. Uh, looking for motion to hire Ethan Elwell uh, as summer help for a DPW.
Take the motion.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Craig. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposer abstentions? Great, carries and looking for a motion to advertise for the purchase of a sewer vac truck. This is something that we did budget for. And do Marie or Neil, you guys have the details of what we would need to advertise for related to the sewer back truck?
Uh, I'll get them to probably Marie Thursday because we've got to replace that fire item tomorrow, so.
Okay, Neil.
So Andy, will that suffice?
Uh, that will, Rob. It's it's a motion to just advertise subject to um, completion of the specifications between the highway department and the village clerk.
Great, thank you. So I I don't remember if we had a motion or a second on this. I don't think we did.
Yes, we did.
We did. See, we're approaching the end of of second and third hour or some shot. All right, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I'm an I.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, hearing none, that has passed. Uh, trustees, uh, I spoke with Bill Gaylord. We've spoken about this last meeting. It's a attachment number nine. Uh, we had a quote to replace the flooring, uh, which is in rough shape on the gazebo. Um, I know, and I know we had an email thread about the labor side of this, but this is just specific to the part side of this right now. We'll discuss that right afterwards. Uh, the full quote is just over six thousand dollars, six thousand and thirty six dollars and eighty five cents. Sorry for my weird voice there. Um, Andy, would we be doing a motion to give uh, to pay the community band half of this so they could use it for this project?
I think the motion should uh, simply be stated that the village is going to expend fifty percent of the purchase for the materials for the gazebo. Um, work at the actual payment details. I think the village uh, rather than you don't want this beauty as a in any way a donation. Um, but this is the actual purchase of materials for a public improvement job.
Okay.
Well, actually, since it's the owned by the village, it really isn't a donation. It's being put into one of our facilities.
Well, I understand that, but but it's going to a private entity rather than directly to the uh, wholesaler or retailer of the goods.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that it's simply for the fifty percent of the purchase price for materials for a public improvement job.
Okay, so I'm looking for that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, I'll give that to how about give that to Kevin second, Deb, is that all right?
Works for me.
Beautiful. Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries, as we discussed this in email, some of you brought up the idea of instead of having Neil's uh, employee or employees doing the work on this, we actually spend some money and get a contractor here to help the community band um, contractors with their installation. What were your thoughts on that, trustees?
I just think because the um, the railings, when they were replaced, I don't know how long ago it was, that they 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 weren't very solid and I think at least anything that they should hire a contractor to do the railings and find some really good material, so they can't be vandalized again.
I have a sneaking suspicion that railings will be the next part of this improvement, but I know right now we're just focused on the floor, but the railings are also in big need.
Yeah, Rob, my my thought is, I mean, haven't haven't had people build with treks. The guys you build with that all the time. They're only left with a pile of sawdust when they get done. They don't waste that material. It's so expensive. So the planning and the all of that stuff that these professionals do all the time might actually pay for hiring them to at least, you know, maybe they'll agree to donate some time if there's, you know, labor available and let somebody run the project for them or something like that. Where you can still use some volunteer labor. But have somebody in charge who, you know, you cut one board wrong and all of a sudden you're you're out of money.
Mm hmm.
So that that that's the that's the benefit I see of getting somebody involved that, you know, and and maybe there is somebody in the band or something like that. Who is that? I don't know, but.
That sounds really smart.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not taken away from Neil and his crew, but at the same time, they, you know, they're not carpenters. They're not, you know, we have plenty of other things that they can be doing. And and especially dealing, like Craig said, with this high, you're talking the treks is high end stuff. And I think someone who deals on a regular basis can be much better off. And like Craig said, you make one bad, you make one cut wrong and we're we're out of money.
And they'll get it done quick.
Correct, yeah.
Andy, if if we were going to bring in a contractor, maybe for like, I don't know, ten fifteen hours, probably total on this. I feel like since it's a lower expense, we have the, I would have the authority to just make that happen with the board support. We wouldn't have to bid or anything like that.
Well, we just have to confirm, obviously, it's not above the the bidding requirement, but we just look at the village procurement policy, depending on the projected expense for the contractor. You just have to comply with that, whether it's verbal quotes, there there may be the the need to get more than one quote, but we got to confirm with the village procurement policy.
Would it help if there was a, you know, a motion approved for the board uh, authorizing the mayor to look into getting a contractor set for this? Assuming it falls on the procurement policy, would that help?
Well, definitely, you need compliance with the procurement policy because it will be uh, the expenditure of some amount of money on a public works project. So there could be a motion to authorize the mayor to uh, comply with the procurement policy and obtain quotes from qualified contractors.
Anyone want to do a so moved on that?
So moved.
Thank you, Emily. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposer abstentions? All right, great. I'll talk to Bill together tomorrow. That'll make him happy. Good stuff, guys. Thank you. Uh, Woods Brook buyout program. Um, it's actually Andy and and I won, and we've already discussed this. I'm really looking, do we even need to table this, Andy, or just wait until next meeting?
Uh, wait until next meeting because it's not been uh, introduced.
Okay, so we're not going to introduce it. We don't need to. Is there any further questions or thoughts on this? I kind of feel like we 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 did that already. If not, uh, discussion regarding the mural project. Um, Deb, you want to take it away?
Whoops. I've been working with um, Katie May Erskine, the um, the artist. We've um, worked a lot back and forth. This is a project that Kevin started and put tons and tons of time and effort into getting the company that owns the Walgreens building to allow us to put a mural on on that big blank white wall. Um, for years, they said no, and then finally Kevin convinced them, um, showed them a sketch of an owl that was done by Katie, who is a very talented artist. Um, she's a real good friend of Sarah, um, Sarah Gorgas and and Justin Don Guinness. She's down here visiting Housick Falls all the time. Anyway, so we have a picture of it.
You want me to share it?
Yeah. Um, we've worked back and forth. Katie May and I worked together. It's been through several different iterations. Um, different versions, but I I think it looks terrific. I I love the way it's the owl and everybody in Housick Falls seems to relate to the owl and the feathers are gorgeous. It's got um, uh, beautiful patterns going on. It's got the little bit of the that flower pattern that's going on in the wings. It's it's a really subtle but really nice Victorian touch, which I think fits the village really well. And I I think it's going to be terrific. So there you have it. I I mean, it when it's changed enormously over time, but I think it's right where where it needs to be, except maybe the the font. But we could work on that later. And just, um, I don't, I don't know how many of you guys have worked with murals or art or painting, but I mean, this looks great as it is, but as she works on it, you know, things sometimes develop a little bit differently. Um, you know, the reds might become brighter or the blue might be a little more blue green or, you know, something like that, but it nothing. It's not going to be a big change from what you're looking at. Um, I I believe we're paying her eight hundred dollars, which is she's that's a very little bit of money for something so beautiful and valuable for our village and um, also coming from the um, development funds um, would be the cost of the paints and stuff. So there you have it. Any comments, questions? She's really talented. You can visit her uh, website, Katie May Erskine. I can send the the email, the website to you, but her work is gorgeous. She's already done. She did the one on the side of Housick provisions. And she did the one that's on the stairs that go up to Nine High.
I think it looks great.
I will tell you, you said that. She was, she worked really hard to get to get it to this point, to something that she's that she feels she can do a great job on and that I think the community will be pleased with. And oh, here's the other cool thing, like people will be able to stand in front of it. And um, like hold their arms out or just stand underneath it and take pictures. It'll be just at the right height. And um, and then, you know, they'll put it on their Instagram or their TikTok or whatever, Snapchat, whatever. And um, we'll go viral. We'll be viral. It'll be awesome.
Yeah, the whole the whole idea was to get people out of their cars when they're traveling up John Street under twenty two. And then with the hopes they get out of their cars, have a picture taken like they do Grandma Moses' mural and stand in front of it and get out of their cars and say, hey, that little coffee shops across the street or Deb shops down there provisions down the street. Maybe they'll get out and spend some money.
Yep. Exactly. So.
Any other uh, questions, thoughts?
I I actually have a question. I mean, I can answer any art questions or, and she's going to start on it. It's this this summer. As soon as we give her the go ahead, she'll be down.
Do we need to do anything tonight, Rob?
I'm not sure, Andy, if we need a formal motion on this, or we just are like, that's great, let's go, let's go.
Right, that's all. There's there's no need for formal motion.
It's great, let's go.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. One's for um, Andy. Um, insurance? I doubt she has her own insurance. She's really a farmer. That's how she makes her living. So I don't think she has her own. She's not like a muralist who's always up on ladders and has her own insurance. Is that something you need to think about?
Right, as I understand it, this is not technically a village project. The village is supporting it financially to a limited degree.
Uh huh.
Private undertaken on a private business, right? Got to make the private
Oh, yeah.
is the one who should be concerned and making sure that there's appropriate insurance while the work is being done on their property.
Okay, so there's no liability on our part, right?
Yeah, belt and suspenders, which I always like to do. I think the village uh, should, uh, Marie, maybe you can confirm with your carrier explain what the project is and determine whether there needs to be any additional uh, notice to the carrier. Um, in general, contractors are required to have the insurances in place on any village um, job. Certainly, insurance is required for building permits on on a private property. Here, this is a little bit different, so uh, it's probably a good idea to have the village at least discuss the project with its insurance uh, broker. Uh, but the work is being done on private property uh, at with the consent of the private property owner. Uh, they should likewise confirm on theirs, but that's not a village issue. Well, Marie, you should check with uh, our carrier just to to confirm. Um, this is what's happening. Uh, it's not someone who's retained by the village. The work's being done on private property. It's simply being supported economically by the village. What are the potential insurance issues?
Yeah, Andy, that was one requirement by the building owners that uh, the person or whoever's doing the project uh, has liability insurance. So if that's something, I think a group of us can fund if it becomes an issue and we have to get some kind of a rider for her. So we'll we'll take care of that if we have to.
Yep.
I'll check on that tomorrow, but I I checked on something the other day that fell in underneath um, our existing riders. So I'll check and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. And the other the other thing I wanted to let you guys know is that I'm going to get Barbara Sussman, who works with artists all the time, um, suggested that we get um, uh, a contract, whatever it's called, a piece of paper that we all that she signs. It says that once the mural is done, um, it then belongs to the village of Housick Falls or whoever owns that building or something, but it doesn't belong to her. So if
Well, it's
we want it, if ever we want to paint over it or make some changes or anything like that, she won't be able to say, hey, that's my artwork. You can't touch it.
All right, great. Thank you, Deb.
Okay. I'm glad you guys like it. I think it's really cool.
I do, too. All right, um, discussion regarding the location of the placement of four electric car charging stations in the village lot. Um, this is something that the town is pursuing. Um, the location that they thought would be the best would be the village lot sort of behind Trusco. Uh, Ken Lorenz has been heading, I think, this uh, with the town. And they met with Neil and Neil is good with that spot as long as he uh, specified it has to be by the pole of the corner of the trusting Trusco parking lot so that they can still do their snow removal. Um, this is, I think, a good thing. There's also a power pole there they can connect to fairly easily. And um, these are things that Ken has explained um, end up being on some sort of GPS locator for anybody who has an electric vehicle. So anybody end up being on some sort of GPS locator for anybody who has an electric vehicle. So anybody driving down Route seven with an electric vehicle, will see that we have one in Housick Falls and will be able to get off, come to Housick Falls and charge their vehicle and maybe stop and get some food. So that's the discussion regarding this. And I think I spoke with Andy today. Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, if we're all good with this, then we would basically pursue an intermunicipal agreement between the village and the town and likely have that ready for us at the July meeting. Is that right, Andy?
It is. That was my recommendation since it would be town-owned charging stations located on village-owned property that, that you just work out the details in terms of whose responsibility it is for, you know, repair, maintenance, insurance. Neil raised snow removal, those kinds of things. It's better to protect the village as well as the town, just to spell those out so it's clear.
So if you guys are good with this, we don't need an official motion. I just want to hear from you guys if you're in favor of this and we'll have Andy start meeting with the town attorney and then, and start discussing this.
Yes, I think it's a great idea.
I'm in favor.
Fantastic.
All right, sounds like we're all good for it.
Can I ask a, a question going back to the mural thing?
Uh, yeah.
If Katie, if Katie calls me and says I'm coming on a XYZ, like June 28th, whatever. Do I give her the money to buy the paint and then get reimbursement from you from the village? Or do I have to turn in a voucher? Or how does that work? Or you can tell me that later another time.
I'll check in with Denise tomorrow. Check in with Denise tomorrow and that, that probably will be a call to Andy. Kevin, do you know if there was this economic development funds we'd set aside and approved at a previous meeting?
Uh, we discussed it. I'm not sure whether we approved it or not, but we did talk about it and I don't know, typically, I think, don't they get half upfront and then half when it's finished?
That's why I just paid my contractor to do my sunroom.
Marie, can you check through some minutes and see if we ever officially approve this? If not, we can approve it.
We approved it last month, I believe. I don't have those with me, but I'm pretty sure we already approved that.
I'm pretty sure we approved the money for it.
I think we did too.
We did. I think we approved up to $1,000.
Yeah, Deb wanted.
I'll double check it tomorrow, but I'm, I'm 90% sure that was approved.
All right, great. And then Deb, once we get confirmation, then check with Denise on how to best to handle the, the, the fun side of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, and I will talk to the town and Ken Lorenz and give them the thumbs up that we're good for this and we need to get an intermunicipal agreement going on the charging. Okay, discussion regarding COVID-19 precaution. Our DPW guys have been back to full time. I don't know if we specifically wanted or decided to have water and sewer departments back full time. I wanted to just gauge the trustees on that. I'm content to have everyone back full time.
Yes.
I'm all in favor of that.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, then I'll send an email out just to make sure they understand and they know. All right.
And that'll be effective when, Rob?
Uh.
When will that be effective?
I would say defective, like if I send an email tomorrow, we'll have it effective Thursday, because that'd be the next business day after I send the email.
Okay, next. That's, that's great.
And Marie, check it with me. Yeah, Emily.
I would just note that, you know, they need to follow the current state guidelines and like, you know, if they're not vaccinated, they need to have a mask on.
Because that aligns with guidelines. I'll, Andy, I'll check with you in the late morning, early afternoon and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that and do that the right way, okay?
You're up.
Yeah.
I believe everybody's had their shots except for Brian Nelson, so.
I'm not sure if that's the case and I'm not sure if that's something we would be able to share regardless, but understood, I will, I'll talk with Andy and if I need to get more clarification on that, I'll call you to get confirmation on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Andy, does that sound good for tomorrow?
Yes, it does, Rob.
All right, thank you. And let's see here. Oh, so we have a resolution. I sent it to you. I'm not going to post it. But this is a number 12 resolution, this attachment that I sent to you. This is a standard form resolution that comes from the New York State and local retirement system. And as soon as I figure out how to rotate it on my screen, be it resolved that the village of Housick Falls hereby establish, establish the following standard workdays for these, I can't even read that. Oh. Titles. And will report the official, the officials to the New York State and local retirement based on their record of activities. This is kind of a standard form we have to do each year, right, Marie? Right, Andy?
That's right.
And it just highlights the, the mayor trustee, judge, court clerk and acting village judge. Andy, is there anything else that needs to be mentioned about this?
Uh, Rob, there's not. It's simply in connection with the state retirement system.
So this is kind of a formality, but we have to do it each, each year. So I'm looking for, Andy, do you need someone to offer this?
I'll offer it.
Quite frankly, I think you should go, Rob, go through the procedure of someone offering it and seconding it.
It, it doesn't say it, but it's, again, it's a weird looking form, so.
It's the form used by the state, but nonetheless.
All right, so Deb has offered. I need a second.
Oh, second.
And just a quick roll call vote, Marie, please.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Rusty O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Marpy.
Yes.
Rusty Decker.
Yes.
Did I miss? Hey, yes.
I'm also a yes.
And Trustee Pine. It's late, guys. It's past my bedtime.
Yeah, ours too. Thank you. And the last item was a resolution amending levy of unpaid water sewer and refuse collection charges. Can you, Andy, summarize this for us quickly?
I, I can. So recall, there was the, the window where state legislation had expired and Governor Cuomo had yet, not yet signed the new legislation concerning the levy of unpaid water bills. Village had taken some action to do that. But prior to the time the county actually printed the village real property tax bills, which would have included the levy for the unpaid water. Governor Cuomo did sign the legislation. There became a legal question about whether the county at that point could actually put the water re-levy on the tax bill and what the retro effect, retroactive effect of that state law was, it remains unclear. So on, after discussing this with Denise and with Rob and with the county at length, it was determined that a conservative approach of not re-leveying the water, unpaid water bills at this point for, to, to confirm compliance with the current state legislation. Since you had passed a resolution previously indicating that you would re-levy the unpaid water, this is to amend that to indicate you're not going to because of the uncertainty under state law, but expressly reserving the right of the village to in fact re-levy the unpaid water charges for the past fiscal year when allowed to do so under state law. I wanted to make it clear on the record that while you're not levying the unpaid water bills for the past fiscal year now, that you are expressly reserving the right to do so for any continuing unpaid water bills for the past fiscal year once allowable under the state legislation, and that's either through the end of the year or lifting of the current COVID emergency.
Wow, that was amazing.
That sure was. That's why we have Andy do that, not me. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls in regular session duly convenience follows one, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls hereby confirms that all unpaid sewer and refuse collection charges, including all applicable penalties, be described in a prior resolution adopted April 20, 2021, be levied upon the real property of such owners at set for, as set for, excuse me, on the abstract attached to such April 20 resolution. And further, that the village treasurer and/or village clerk shall confirm such levy with the county or rental there in connection with the preparation of real property tax bills for the village of Housick Falls for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And two, the Board of Trustees amend its April 20, 2021 resolution to the extent of removing the levy of unpaid water charges in light of the New York state legislation amending the New York Public Service Law as discussed above. However, the Board of Trustees expressly reserves the right to levy all such unpaid water charges discussed herein upon the expiration of such amendment to the New York Public Service Law. Looking for someone to offer the resolution in seconds.
I'll offer that, Rob.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bobby. Further discussion or questions? And if you have brain power still, that is great. I'm not sure if I do. Hearing none, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, Marie.
Rusty Pine.
Yes.
Rusty O'Malley.
Yes.
Rusty Alter.
Yes.
Trustee Decker.
Yes.
Rusty Marpy.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
All in favor, passes. Thank you.
Okay, that is it. Is there any other business the trustees want to bring up to the board? If not, I am looking for a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel with no additional business after.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Second, Emily, are you seconding it?
Yeah, I'm second.
All right, Andy, if we are going to bring in other people beside the board such as you, do we dictate that or do we just do it and make reference to it in the notes?
You don't have to reference me. I come in with the executive session. If there's any other parties, you should identify that calling in.
In, in the motion?
Yep.
All right, then Neil, are you still on? Well, I was hoping he would be able to join us. I'll, I'll shoot him a text and see if he's available to join us. So hopefully Neil will also be joining us there. So that is the motion. We have a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right, it carries trustees. I will shoot you an email in a couple of minutes. It's going to take me a couple of minutes to, to save something, get something else moving, but I'll have an email with separate instructions and I'll have a document. Everyone else, thank you. Good night.
Can you text me the link?
Night, Marie.
Yes, Kevin, I will text you the link once I get it set and announced, everybody. Yep.
Night, everyone who's not coming back.
Good night.